I'd like to call the city council work session to order. Today is the 25th of August, 2020. The time is six o'clock and we'd like to begin our work session as we always do with public comments. We have individuals that have signed up to do public comments. All public comments at this time will be on Zoom. So I'd ask your city clerk to introduce those that have asked to make public comments at this time.
Chad Parsons. Mayor, I do not see his name on our Zoom feed.
Okay, we'll come back and see if they show up.
Renee Parsons. Caleb Heine. Do not see him on Zoom either. Billy Harris. Do not see his name on Zoom either. Tom Matamore. I don't see him either. John Shapley. Not present on Zoom either. And Dr. Julio, I'm not sure how to say the last name. Rianis?
I don't see them on the Zoom either, or him.
So with that, Mayor, that's at the end of the requests we had for this week.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the Zoom call that wants to make public comments before we begin our work session? Okay, seeing that, I'll call the public comment period to close. There will be another one at the end of the work session. We're going to start the work session with the introduction. Who is doing the introduction for the AEM study?
Mayor, that'll be Darren Parkin.
Darren, and then I'm sure, I think we have the study individuals that will be giving us more information. Darren, go ahead. I'll tell you what, you gave us more work than I used to get in a graduate course at college with this 200-page document that we had. It was very, very technical. Hopefully, we're going to get all a great education tonight.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I think this is a pretty cool study that Phase One has been completed. Dr. Brad DeCarre with the University of Wyoming will be giving the presentation. Just as a quick refresher, this was a joint project between the City of Laramie, Albany County, and the Albany County EMA. The City of Laramie City Council authorized $110,000 for this study. Albany County contributed $75,000 and the county EMA pursued a $96,500 grant to complete the study. So I think with that, and remember, the ultimate goal of this, really from a municipal standpoint, is to, and next year when Phase Two is complete, follow that up and it's in the budget to do a hazardous spill response plan on I-80 so that we have a formal plan in place for our southern municipal wellfields, Pope Springs and Soldier Springs, in case of a hazardous hazmat spill, significant hazmat spill on Interstate 80 in the Telephone Canyon area. So that I turn it over to Dr. Carr.
Welcome, Dr. Carr. Looking forward to hearing all your information to train us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so if I could get the start of the presentation up so we can all look at it. While we're waiting, let me introduce the master student that's also really doing the heavy lifting on all of this effort, which is Eva Smith. She's also on the call. And so if we get, when we get to the questions part, certainly there's things that could be directed both to me and to Eva, and we'll sort of jointly make any responses as needed. So we appreciate the time, honestly, as well as the effort with this, and we'll just go ahead, really.
Dr. Carr, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
For you and Eva, if there's council members that have questions during the presentation, would it be, would you ask us to wait until the presentation is complete, or would you take them as we go through?
Let's actually take them as we go because, like you mentioned, there's actually a lot of quote-unquote parts of this report, or interim report, really. And so it'd be better if we get them on the fly. I would suggest, and I don't know how you at council would normally deal with that, but if somebody potentially does the reactions, I hope that Nancy was able to see that and then I could be interrupted easily. So I don't, if you have a protocol for that, please let me know.
All right, let me just kind of give you the, you know, the basics on this. Initially, questions will be made by the city council and staff. There will be a portion where we're going to be, you know, once you've gone through this and we've had the council have a chance to ask questions, we'll invite the public to ask questions at that also before the, before the work session's complete. But initially, all questions are going to be coming from council and staff.
Understand. Okay. And again, interrupt, please, however it's easily available to do. And like I said, it'd be best probably if we answer questions on, during the presentation because otherwise, there's quite a bit and there, it's going to be a little challenging to go around the presentation since we're kind of, I'm not driving it per se. So I'll be happier to take things on during that particular slide, really, because we could try to clarify things or answer other questions as needed.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so today, we're going to talk about the first-year efforts of this airborne electromagnetic geophysical study aligning the I-80 corridor and including the municipal wellfields for the City of Laramie, which are basically Pope Springs and Soldier Springs. Obviously, that's the eastern side of the basin. This effort was conducted, again, by myself and overseeing a master's-level graduate student, which is Ms. Eva Smith, as I introduced before. So please go ahead to the next slide. All right, so we have a lot to go through, some of which you've probably already been introduced to in various stages before, which is really sort of the aquifer geology, the survey location, general mountain front recharge, which is what we're talking about here, since the, our aquifers are really maintained by snowmelt, especially in the Laramie Range, that upon springtime, basically, you know, infiltrates, so to speak, into the units that we care about, which are the Casper units, the Casper Formation, and then ends up in the basin, you know, mostly by gravity. But as part of that, we really want to understand how that system works in a larger scale. Most of the information we have to date is scattered wells, a little bit of sort of surface geophysics and surface geologic mapping. So the question becomes, what does it really look like if we start to slice things at depth, all the way from the surface down to the basement, which in this case, the bedrock is really mostly that Sherman granite that we see in the eastern Laramies? We'll notice as we go through this that there's a little bit of complication to that idea, which we had no idea about, but anyway, there's all kinds of things that we learned. And again, it's good to keep in mind that this is really a small portion of the eastern Laramie Basin, a small portion of, you know, the aquifers of import to us here in this, in Laramie. So, but, I mean, it's a very critical portion with the interstate running through and those related questions about where our wellfields are and threats to any potential parts of the wellfield. We'll look at that, we'll look at how we, you know, collect, well, a little bit about how we collect the data and a lot more about how the tools we use to process the data. We'll look at parts of the data, that's really that first-year data summary, so primarily the geophysical images of, in 2D mostly, but also the spatial 3D representation of the area. And then just a summary and some year-one recommendations based on where we are now relative to those goals of, you know, what does it look like, what is it doing, and what kind of things do we think we should focus on for Year Two, which also progressed us towards that question of, you know, what are the threats, if there, you know, and where should we build most concern? Overall, council and the county commissioners were provided reports by Tri-Hydro in years previous to, gave recommendations about surface mitigation, none of which I would dispute or argue with to any extent. Obviously, those things are additional short-run, short-term mitigation remediation effects to any actual contaminant release in Telephone Canyon. None of those are not, are things that we shouldn't consider as well. The ultimate sort of backdrop for this study would be is if we basically did nothing, if we did nothing at all, and it happened at the wrong time of year, which effectively is our recharge time, in sort of April to early July, and we let the spill happen and potentially soak into the ground, and given long enough time, what would happen? Honestly, those were questions we had no idea about. That will lead to the data and the interpretations we've made so far, which effectively would lead to a few recommendations of things we could do in addition to those recommendations that were made by Tri-Hydro originally a few years ago, you know, to help us minimize any risk to any of our potential water sources. So bear that in mind. This is really building on work. It's looking at a different part of the system and with the ultimate goal of giving us more information to help develop any sort of reaction plans, mitigation plans, in the event that something were to happen, especially, again, if all things went wrong and we did nothing at the wrong time of year, we could certainly argue that the likelihood of a threat is higher. I'm not an actuary, so I couldn't actually put numbers to that, but nonetheless, it's, it'll be fairly apparent when we look at the data that there are certain things we could do to really minimize any of these threats that, you know, sort of propagated the question in the first place. So if I could have the next slide, please? We'll start doing sort of that basic rundown. Again, most of you, I'm sure, have an idea of sort of these schematics. We've seen them in the aquifer protection plan, we've seen them in various reports related to the aquifer. Our water source is primarily in the Casper Formation. We refer to it as the Casper Aquifer. It's primarily sandstones and limestone with some silt stones and deeper members. It's all exposed. So as you go to the east and you go up towards the summit, obviously, you're transiting through that whole entire sequence from the upper units, which are referred to as sort of the epsilon, the delta, the gamma, all the way to, well, gamma's kind of the funny one, in the middle of mid-units, beta, and then is a mid-unit and a lower unit, and alpha is definitely the largest unit and is the lowest unit. Now underneath this whole thing, and that's not mentioned in this, in this schematic, is a little basal unit we call the Fountain Formation. It's an arcoxic sandstone, which is primarily the weathered product of the Sherman granite, primarily, that's sort of consolidated into a rock. And you'll see why we care about the fountain shortly. But in general, we assume gravity winds, so as recharge and snowmelt goes into these rocks, it flows downhill, coming from the east into our basin, which we then usually sink wells in the eastern side of the basin down to maybe 200 to maybe 500, 600 feet at most usually to get our water sources. Now, we'll start kind of talking about the dynamics of the whole system from east to west and top to bottom shortly, but I wanted you guys to make sure you keep this in mind. If I could have the next slide, please? Again, the stratigraphy of the Casper Formation is primarily, as I mentioned, sort of that, you know, the nice Greek alphabet units or subunits. Most of them are divided by those limestone, which if nothing else were going on, are generally impermeable to flow going across. But as you can see on the right-hand side, this was, that was, this is a figure taken from one of Peter Huntoun's papers in the late 70s and some of his students that were mapping quite a few sort of structural geologic features. Those things are like the folds, the monoclines, the faults, the anoclines, all that stuff that you see on there are structural complications that are part of the mountain-building event that happened in the Laramies the last time, which was a few million, well, 100 million years ago. So those things affect how groundwater moves. And in fact, if I could have the next slide, please? This is just a hydrograph from one of the wells that we put in at UW and myself and a groundwater colleague, Yi Zheng. And this is in government gulch, which is actually within the survey area and samples the very lowest parts of the Casper Formation and the fountain and the upper granite. And you can see the basic hydrograph here shows water pretty much diminishing in the well. That's the depth to water and feet below the land surface on the left side there. And you can see everything kind of is decreasing until you get to basically April. And then as snowmelt starts to kick in and infiltration increases in those source rock units, basically, the water level in that well spikes, goes up 25 feet. So it goes from that 40-ish level up to the 15 to 12-ish level. So there's quite a bit of water that's moving through that system, heading down slope into the basin. And that lasts for about, you know, a good solid two months-ish, you know, sort of mid-April-ish to early July. And you can see it kind of, it's not always consistent, there's always little blips. Occasionally, there's little spikes at odd times of the year when we have weird snow events or, you know, like in 2013 when we had that September full of rain. I'm sure if we had had government gulch in place, it would have had a weird spike instead of a decrease through that fall time. So I mean, there are, you know, it's universal more that the pattern is similar. On any given year, we're looking at our main water resource recharge is coming through this snowmelt in this period of time. So we really need to understand it now. That being said, this airborne survey was flown in October, right? So it's the lowest point in that hydrographic recharge. So in some ways, that's good. We see the areas that are still being, you know, plentiful with fluid or active in terms of potentially moving groundwater around the system when we don't see a whole lot of recharge. Part of this study is looking at that very time-sensitive part, so there's been some surface geophysics at the government gulch site to look at what geophysical data does in the peak recharge time, so June, effectively, and compare that to a fall time like October. And so that data hasn't been fully completed yet, but it really came out of looking at hydrographs like this and our study. So if I could have the next slide, please? Again, from previous groundwater geology work, mostly derived from Huntoun and his students, again, like this case, Lundie, we're looking, you know, we have from the scattered wells that we have in the basin, we have different ideas on how much water moves and is available through these members. So again, you know, there's kind of on the left there, there's sort of a description of the member of the Casper Formation, so epsilon and gamma are basically kind of upper and middle. You can see kind of what, how much water tends to be moving in those materials, in those sandstones primarily as that hydraulic conductivity and the transmissivity is how much water could be produced through those things, fairly significant. Then there's sort of the aggregate where they look at, basically, the middle one there is alpha to epsilon, so the entire package. And, you know, you're basically looking at a large amount of water. We know the wellfields tend to produce on the order of millions of gallons a day, so there's something else going on. It's not just water from the formations as we would, you know, see in the information here. And you can kind of get that, the better feeling for that when you look lower in this figure and you look at unfractured versus fractured areas of the Casper, and you can see that there's basically almost a 20-fold increase in the amount of water that you can produce from fractured areas of the Casper. So those are the areas, obviously, that if we're worried about water movement, for whatever reason, strict recharge, you know, municipal use, whatever, contaminant transport, whatever, we have to understand where fractures are present, structures are influence, the ability of water to get around in the system. So that kind of adds another layer of complexity, which we have some background information for, less so specifically in the site itself, but in some regards, these numbers give us ideas to build on, especially in this Year Two modeling. So if I could have the next slide, please? Perfect. All right, so we're having to build a bridge between geophysical data, geologic data, and hydrologic data. That's a big order, actually. And so, again, we have to use everything we have on hand. So this is, what we're looking at here is basically geophysical well log data from the entire Casper sequence from Lower Satanka all the way down into the granite. Now, there's not one well, well, actually, there is one well that transits that whole sequence, but it's at Red Buttes. And unfortunately, I don't have the curve for the part that we care about, which would be the fountain and the granite. But here, we've got three wells, one that's JRA-1, it's on, it's on the east side of Farrow Ridge, on the east side of the golf course. It was drilled in 2017, late 2016, early 2017. The blue line represents Red Buttes, the part of the hole in the Casper that we can access, and the red data there is from the government gulch well, which we were looking at the hydrograph for. There's basically, these are geophysical logs, so we're looking at.
Brad, could we interject a question right now? Councilor Doherty has a question.
What's the vertical axis?
The vertical axis on this slide is depth. So we're looking at depths below surface, but it's in meters, so kind of make that transition in your mind. Those are, those are meter depths, so we're looking at upwards of sort of 1,000, well, roughly around 1,000 feet of section through, and this would be present in the basin. So as you move further to the west, where you have roughly sort of 300-ish feet of Satanka, sitting on top of the Casper Formation's rocks, which generally are around 750 feet thick, and then you start reaching the top of the granite. So, and it, if that, hopefully, that kind of gives you an idea that this, this data set is sort of a compilation, again, of what we might expect the geophysical response to be in these rocks, but it's measured in the rocks.
They all like meeting with us today.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, that was, go ahead, Brad.
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't know if that was a question. Sorry. Okay, so again, we're having to build that bridge between the airborne geophysics data that we collected with the helicopter and the electromagnetic loop that was underneath the helicopter and what the rocks really tell us. Okay, so this is, this is borehole geophysics, so this is information that we can use to do that correlation now. Cool thing is, not only are we looking at geophysics here, we're looking at, and the resistivities, which is really what we care about because they're a direct correlation, we're looking at the rock types. If we look at gamma, that's kind of a measure of what the rocks are, if they're sandy air or limestoney or if they're granite. The magnetic susceptibility, which we'll talk about in a little bit, because there's magnetic data that we collect as we do the EM data. And then there's also information about the fluids, about groundwater, effectively, in borehole logging that we can do. And that, you can see that kind of in all of the plots that are sort of right of center. So there's fluid temperature, fluid conductivity, porosity, as we determine it from nuclear magnetic resonance tools, how much free-flowed fluid is moving, so how much free water is moving around the pore spaces. We can see inflow and outflow to the boreholes and what depths it's coming from. And then we can also get numbers to that hydraulic conductivity that we looked at from Huntoun and Lundie and transmissivity, and those are also estimates from the NMR porosities and amount of free fluid. So you can see already, there's a lot of cool information that we can bring together to help us understand that physical airborne survey that we did. As an example, if we look at the, where it says inflow and outflow, and there's sort of a green stick figure and a red stick figure at the bottom of it, that's basically water coming into those units. The green units are basically Casper rocks, the red units are the granite rocks. So those are fractures that are producing water now, or at least when this log was recorded, which was maybe no more than a year or two ago. So basically, those fractures are hydraulically active, so we want to see that. This is data measured with basically a flow meter that we put down the hole. So we actually watch the water going, or well, we don't watch it, but we measure it coming in or going out. So you can see lower, lower Casper formation, so the alpha is very productive water-wise. And then, you know, we actually, in these cases, we have outflow in the upper units, so the delta and the gamma, which again, are primarily the ones we use residential and municipally in our side of the basin. So again, in this particular case, they're leaving, the water's leaving the hole, but it doesn't matter if you close off or you don't tap deeper fractures with higher hydraulic head, those fractures would probably make water to the hole. So nonetheless, what we care about is which fractures are moving stuff and what depth level they're coming at. So this gives us more information to help us support what we see in the data we're going to look at soon. So if I could have the next slide, please? All right, so again, last year, when this project was first nascent, this was the plan. We implemented the plan in October, and basically, all those red lines were transects flown by the helicopter with the EM loop flying underneath it. You can see the locations of Pope and Soldier. Obviously, we can't cover everything. It's not one of those things that you fly over the interstate completely, so there are gaps. There are also gaps in places where they don't fly over houses, they have to avoid, you know, other things like power lines. Some power lines we can just eliminate from the data set through gaps. So I mean, there isn't 100% coverage, but it's close. And again, we're looking at bigger structures. We're looking from the surface all the way down roughly to 1,000 feet in spots in the eastern basin. So we're kind of looking at big-picture things. There are techniques to look at more details if we really wanted to get, you know, sort of quote-unquote "down and dirty" in certain areas and really try to understand how things are going on, but this gives us much more of an exploration view of what's really happening at larger scales, which honestly, up till now, we didn't have. And so the real value in this is a bigger kind of large-scale understanding of how groundwater exists and flows and moves within this small area of the eastern basin. So again, the north-south lines are spaced much larger, the transects east and west are roughly 100 meters apart or 300 and so feet. If we counted where data is being collected along any of those transects, our nominal spacing is 5 to 20 feet, depending on the density and how fast they were flying. Again, this was flown in October. We had some challenges with weather when the crew first showed up, so they were actually on-site for almost two weeks, even though this really took about four days to complete. So it's a fairly fast process, but it's very subject to wind, snow, those kind of weather things can hamper how much data they can fly in any given day. But once it's rolling, it can roll pretty fast. If I could have the next slide, please? We'll go a little bit further. Again, this, the black enclosed area that you can see on the surface geology map encloses our survey area. This is the basic geologic map, where that purple is the whole entirety of the Casper Formation. You can see the map's surface structures, the faults and monoclinal folds and things like that that are in this area. So again, we're, you know, we're not making it easy because there's a lot of complexity that is already kind of understood for these units in this particular area, but we never really knew what were all the causes and if these faults and structures exist at enough depth or all the way through the section to help understand how groundwater reacts to them. So if I could have the next slide? Again, real basic reminder of what this system does. So for those days it was flying, you saw a helicopter, you saw a loop underneath that helicopter that looked kind of odd with that little structure in the back, which is the receiver. The loop is really basically generating a primary magnetic field, which, half of which is going into the atmosphere, the other half is going towards the ground. Anything under the subsurface that can conduct a secondary a secondary current, which is generated by that primary magnetic field, will then create its own secondary magnetic field, which will then, half of which will come back out of the earth and impinge the loop. So, that small part of the receiver is really measuring that secondary magnetic field. And so, we're looking for things that can conduct electricity in a really simplistic sort of way. You've basically got to be able to generate a secondary electric field in the ground by having lots of water present, having lots of metals present. So, the same sort of technology would be used by mineral exploration companies, but it's really taken off as ways to help understand aquifers, which is how we were using it. So, if I could have the next slide, please? Again, back to our rock types, and where they fall in the data volume, in the data scale. So, we think of the world in resistivity primarily, or conductivity, which is just the inverse of the resistivity. So, again, if you kind of focus on where the red squares are, the igneous rocks, the basement rocks are generally high-resistivity things. The sandstones and the limestones can be kind of moderate resistivities, around 100 to 200 to 500 O-meters, depending on how thick they are. Primarily, the Casper is a sandstone dominant unit, so it's going to be somewhere from 500 to 100 O-meter resistivities typically. And then, if you go all the way down to where aquifers lie, if we just said freshwater, or even salty water, if we happen to be near a coast, I guess, those resistivities drop even further, because the resistivity of water, just general water, is around 5 O-meters. Saltwater hangs out around 1. So, again, everything is biased. The more saturated the rocks are, the lower the measured resistivity. Now, there is a little complication with that, as clay particles, like weathered rock material, that's very, sort of like bentonite, or just sort of soil clays potentially, not soils per se, but like the clay part of a soil, like we see mostly around town, is going to also be relatively conductive, but it's mostly going to fall under that sort of shale zone, which is a bit overlapping with water. So, we have to be careful that we're not just looking at clay-dominated sequences. But fortunately, for the Casper formation, that's rare, right? The clay-dominated sequences are the overlying Satanka. So, you know, we, and I'll show you an example of what it looks like when you're actually measuring data more in the Satanka than the Casper. But, anyway, we can have the next slide. Just keep that in mind, that all of this is related to, the data that we'll look at is all related to rock and water. Then, sort of some of the generalized research questions and working hypotheses are really what geologic units and structures provide those pathways from the mountains to the basin. Obvious, does gravity dominate how groundwater moves? And why? You know, is it just straight downhill? Should we expect all the water to go from east to west, straight into the basin, or is it a little more complex than that? And finally, you know, the main one of the main questions, which is really, are the municipal wellfields and the I-80 corridor connected, hydraulically? And where? And if so, what does? I mean, we need to see that. We need to see it in kind of bigger-picture grandness, so to speak. So, towards that end, there's a bunch of sort of working hypotheses that we can glean from all the hydraulic information that's been done in the past in those wells, as well as the borehole geophysics, which was also done prior to this AEM survey. And that is, the ones that I've listed here are effectively that low-resistivity areas in the AEM data not only reflect high porosity, but that porosity doesn't usually get adjusted and reflect high permeability or high water movement, unless we have some kind of structure present, like those faults, essentially. Groundwater flows along these topographic gradients, we have to assume that, right? High to low. That's, the water moves from the snowmelt up on top to down to where we can drill a well and tap it. That has to be a basic working hypothesis. The geophysics data images these fractures and folds by the tectonic alteration, et cetera, as lower resistivity units. Like, if all were uniform and unfractured, the resistivity should remain laterally consistent, if we look at them sort of in cross-section. So, we shouldn't see changes in a unit that we define. And lastly, we have no idea what the basement, the bedrock, the granite, however you want to think about it, how that looks, and what influences it might impart on the overlying groundwater permeability. We just have no idea. We don't have enough wells. If we didn't do anything else, we don't really know what the basement looks like, and we can't estimate what really it could be doing to help move water around the basin. And so, this study, again, tiny little portion of the eastern Laramie Basin, but we still can start to make those entrances. So, if I could have the next slide? To do this, we have to get the data, which we talked about, we have to work that data through some software, which is known as Workbench. It basically allows us to process those data, eliminate things that we'd consider high noise, like powerlines, or, you know, if they were anywhere near something. There's a couple of buried pipelines that run along kind of near the I-80 corridor, which also introduced some holes that we really didn't know about before this started. But nonetheless, you know, we need sort of software to help us get there. Then, we have some visualization kind of programs that are known as the S.O.S. Montage. It also allows us to look at and process the magnetics data, which, again, turned out to be something we didn't really expect to be helpful, but turned out to be very helpful, as well as create the figures that we'll look at in profile. We're not really going to have too many 3D things that we're going to look at. But, and currently, we're finishing up sort of making that transition from the geophysics data into a geologic and structural model that's integrated with a piece of software called Geocine 3D. So, that's in various stages of being completed right now. And so, let's back up, that's where we're, that's where our analysis is at right now, and the tools that we're using to get there. This is outside of year-two effort, which is groundwater modeling. So, the structural models that integrate the geology and the geophysics will also allow us to integrate hydrologic parameters that we saw in that one table, and the in situ borehole logs, to help us constrain the predictive modeling of groundwater movement, and to end or potentially, you know, some contaminant transport, to understand a little better. So, it's helping us build constraints. Otherwise, it's been probably one of the reasons why there's been a lack of groundwater modeling on the aquifer, because it's complex, and there's a lot going on. And so, helping to eliminate some of those variables is really important, and that's what the geophysics and this 3D sort of structural model building helps to mitigate and helps to minimize. If I could have the next slide? So, again, this is just a little more detail, this is the survey area in the left, and you can see where the JRA-1 well is on Farrell Ridge, or on the edge of Farrell Ridge. Those, the data you can see in the middle, the brownish colors, is basically the units. So, it's what we see when we look, that's an optical log of the rocks. You can see there's sort of alternating bands of light-colored stuff and dark-colored stuff that sometimes represents sort of the little bits of clay content. It also represents darkness, when the borehole's deeper than the drilled wall, it's a little harder to get light back there, so it can look a little darker. But, when it's, when that borehole gets a little wider, it also tends to be where there's fractures. And so, it wouldn't matter how bright I made the light, it probably wouldn't see the end, anyway. So, those are areas of interest. You can see the geophysical resistivity log on the far left, and how that, as you go across, it relates to the water, the flow in and out of the hole, the conductivity's and the temperature. So, those sorts of things are being integrated. And that's for the upper half, so this is really more detailed on the, sort of the delta part of the Casper formation to a middle part of the, a middle part of the alpha, so the upper part to the lower part, but not the complete sequence. If we go to the next slide, we'll look in a little more detail at the same thing for the Government Gulch Well, which, again, Government Gulch only sees the lower part of the Casper formation as a whole, so the alpha, the lower parts of the alpha, the fountain, and the granite. And the optical only sees the granite, because the hole was cased through the upper part, or this particular one was. But those black lines, the upper black line is the boundary between the Casper formation and the fountain, and the lower one is between the fountain and the granite. That red line that you see says EM induction, so again, it's kind of a measure of the resistivity. And anytime it deviates to the right, that means it's basically less resistive, it's lower resistivity, and that's a good thing. So, we can see that clearly, the fountain is a very saturated unit, alright? And I mean, you can kind of get that idea from the blue and the red that are a little bit further over, which are the porosity and free water. But, compare that fountain material, or fountain rock, essentially, to the Casper, which is sitting on top of it, and you can see there's actually a difference. So, this should give us an indication that there's a lot of recharge happening into that zone, into that fountain formation, the lower part of the Casper, and the upper part of the fractured bedrock. So, yeah, let's, we'll get on more of that here in a second. If we go to the next slide? Again, we're taking kind of that whole look, this is the composite again. So, again, we can pick out the geophysics related to geology, related to water flow, and use that then now in the next slide, if we could go ahead and start looking at the data. Alright, so, in the upper part of the slide, you can see the yellow line, that's actually where the profile was collected. This one goes through the Government Gulch Well. You can see the location of the Government Gulch, or sorry, Government Gulch Well, it's east on the left-hand side, and west on the right-hand side. There's a gap right where the Government Gulch Well is, because if any of you have walked around up there, the forest, it used to be where the old Lincoln Highway came off the summit, and came down into the valley, and it got occupied by powerlines. And so, the powerlines on the, you know, at the surface basically interfere with the data. So, we just basically put in the resistivity from the borehole information in that spot, that's why there's a color. But, you can see right away that if we were, if we were just basically describing where we think the units are that are hydraulically significant, again, think about that chart with the resistivities, low resistivities are not only, you know, more likely sedimentary units, but they're also saturated sedimentary units. So, you can see that really blue color, which is high at the, high in the section to the left, is basically going to be that fountain, and upper granite, and lower Casper, alright? So, pretty much, and this is October again, right? So, that unit is a nice sponge, probably throughout most of the year. Now, it's not laterally continuous, you can see there's changes in the blue color, it gets a little less blue as you start coming into the basin, you see other blue spots above it. So, those are the things that we have to correlate, the geology and the geophysics, right? Because the detailed lithology is going to be a little bit adjusted, because we're looking at a bigger scale. So, units that we would define geologically from a drill hole are going to get a little average together. So, we're going to call those hydrogeophysical or hydrostratigraphic units, alright? They're a little bit different than those same, you know, Casper definitions of epsilon to delta, delta to gamma, gamma to beta, beta to alpha, alright? They're going to be a little bit of a hodgepodge, because they're covering larger volumes, essentially. So, they're still significant, they're still telling us if they're kind of saturated, or less saturated, or unsaturated, but, you know, we're looking at those changes. Now, the other thing to notice is when all of a sudden we go from sort of that blue-green, and then it goes really red, goes really resistive, essentially. The bright red colors are the resistive. That is when we hit the bedrock, right? Bedrock does not conduct electricity very well, at least the granite, typically. So, this will be common through anything we look at. When you get very resistive, you're generally looking, I mean, really resistive, we're talking thousands of O-meters here, so really bright pink-red, you're basically looking at the granite or an igneous equivalent. So, if we could have the next slide, we'll start to just look at a few of these. Now, we flipped, we're now looking east, well, west to east, essentially, left to right. So, we're going into the basin, it's pretty easy to tell just based on the slope, right? So, things are a little different, there's a lot of things to note. Again, that same sort of low-resistivity, sub-hundred O-meter blues, deep blues, show up low, so right above, basically, the resistor of the granite. But, as we go deeper, in this case, and further north, you can see more definitions. So, there's more units sort of stratigraphically or hydrogeologically showing up. And, again, there's some changes, especially as you get out into the basin closer to the wellfields, that make you wonder what's going on. You can't really see the bedrock, you can't really see some of the high resistivities in those hydrostratigraphic units in the Casper. But, anyway, we'll talk about that a little bit more, too. You also see changes in the elevation of the granite, right? It's not flat. I mean, it's sloping, one would expect that, right? Because it crops out on the summit, but, you know, it's not like a nice smooth transition. And even when you look at that data, you can see the resistivity varies. It's not always consistently high in the thousands, like every once in a while, it drops lower, maybe closer to 1,000 or something like that. And so, those are changes that we still have to look at with respect to, you know, structure and structure permeability. So, fractures, essentially, moving water, things like that, okay? So, not only can we have the basement causing changes in how the groundwater moves from the summit down here, but we can also see influences where basement tectonics and structure reflect higher up in the sequence, too. So, you know, it's a bit of a puzzle, really, but let's go to the next one, so you guys still get a feel for what's going on. This is a north-south transect, with north on the left, south on the right.
Dr. Carr, could you take another question? Counselor Staudtner has a question for you.
Okay.
I don't know if you can go back to the previous slide, but what was the black line?
Oh, that's basically, the black line is simply a definition of the base of one of those hydrostratigraphic kind of units. So, in the course of our analysis, we're going to define how thick they are, when we build that 3D sort of structural geophysical model for hydrologic, you know, for the next step of hydrologic groundwater modeling. So, those are really just highlighting things at the surface. So, and generally, their higher resistivity is in this line, right? So, you know, they are less saturated, you're probably, you know, they're under the static water table. I mean, obviously, the water table is not right at the surface unless there's a spring right there, but it tends to be drier parts of the formation. If you come down, if you look back at the geologic map, there's a different geologic map that the survey has, which sort of subdivides the Casper into its major formations. So, you can actually laterally pick out, you know, where the gamma crops out, and where the contact between the beta and the gamma are. And, in our survey area, that's a lot of it. I mean, as you get further to the east, some of the delta is less exposed, and the epsilon's not even really exposed. And so, but those are, those are just lines to help us define those, the thicknesses of those stratigraphic units.
Not sure I understood that, but, okay.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe that would be a separate question. But basically, again, it comes back to us lumping. So, we know what the geology is defined as from drill holes, but we're seeing it in an average sense from the geophysics. And so, some of those units are more combined, as we see them geophysically. And so, instead of having six layers, we're going to see four, essentially. So, we still have to define their thickness. So, in a sense, we're tracing where we say the upper and lower boundaries are for those things, to create those thickness maps of the units as we proceed into hydrologic modeling.
So, how come the east-to-west graph didn't have a black line on it? I'm just trying to figure out what's different.
Well, I mean, we, so, you're seeing kind of various stages of how the analysis was. So, we're not, you know, those black lines were put on by, excuse me, by us. So, you know, they're, not all of the figures at this point are going to have those things at this stage, and, you know, I'm just kind of showing how we're doing analysis in addition to just the raw data itself. Okay, if we could go back to that north-south for a second? Again, the highlight here is really this transect, again, is kind of going, you know, along the basin, or sort of parallel. And, we're crossing a major structural feature, which is the Soldier monocline, it's fairly close, a bit east of where the wellfield, Soldier Springs wellfield exists. But nonetheless, the things to note in this particular slide are that change in the lower, low-resistivity, that blue zone, right? Even you look kind of a little bit to the left of where the black square is highlighting the location of Soldier monocline, based on the surface geology. the location of soldier monocline based on the surface geology, you can see the resistivity isn't, is changing. It's not exactly consistently at the same level. You can see above in the casper formation, which is a little more resistive typically, there's a lowering even as we get closer to that structure, which again, could infer that we're looking at, you know, fractured intervals that are basically associated with the structure that are allowing water to move vertically through the system. Because again, you know, if everything was ideal and there was no fractures, the vertical transmissivity would be low. We know that from other parts of the basin and other, a few, the few holes that were drilled that don't show high flow, usually they're fairly more, they're fairly consistent and less fracturing present in the materials. So that makes sense that that resistivity doesn't, not only varies, but goes lower if there's a potential for water movement through kind of up to, you know, top to bottom, not just laterally, like those changes are important. But the, and there's, the last thing, if we go to the next slide, which is basically the same, the same view, same line. I want you to focus a little different area. If you go down to the bottom again, looking at the bedrock, you'll see that it's not very flat. It doesn't exactly mirror the surface topography, but it kind of does in a little bit, which again, as sort of a geoscientist would tell us that there's controls that, you know, where the basement was prior to sedimentary deposition actually mattered. And things that we see at the surface now are influenced by what was down at the granite surface when it was exposed. At some point it was. And again, the lateral resistivity changes in that zone are also helpful to look at and correlate with those surface mapped features. You know, we know we have faults at the surface from the geologic maps. The question always becomes how do those features exist at depth? And if not only do they exist at depth, do they go, you know, all the way into the bedrock? You know, is the bedrock actually some kind of, you know, control on that sort of thing too? And so looking for those lateral changes in resistivity are extremely important in these data sets. And so again, this is just a small bit of the whole thing, just so you get a basic idea of all the data. So most of this report was really a compilation in the appendices of all the profile lines. So you're more than welcome. Once that, once we get, we still have yet to make all the data available directly to the city and the county. It's all ready to go. So I mean, we just need to get, I don't know exactly the format or repository and archiving that will go on, but nonetheless, it's available. So all of this stuff could be looked at by others. Again, we're developing the integrated 3D geo and eventually transitioning to that hydromodeling this year. But nonetheless, all of this is available, so it gives you an idea. If I could go, if we could have the next slide, please? So this is that other little bit of the data, the magnetics data. Again, ideally, this is only telling us anything about the granite, telling us nothing about the sedimentary units above because they're, they're basically amagnetic. They really don't have much of a signature. In fact, this data, when we first were doing it, you know, it was kind of like, we didn't really, I didn't feel like we needed it. I felt like we would just likely see a gradient going from west to east, from low to, that would be low to high. And that gradient would only reflect the depths to the bedrock. Because the Sherman granite is slightly magnetic, not very well, not very good, but it's enough so that in this survey, we would detect it. The surprise was what we see here. A lot more interesting things going on, not just a steady gradient from low to high, east to west. But in fact, a large magnetic anomaly that's dissecting in a sort of southwest-northeast fashion. It's not consistent. So if you look across the middle of that thing, as you get closer to where the interstate is, you can see that it goes from a high to a little bit less of a high to another high again as we get towards the interstate. And then you also see some areas in the southeastern corner that are, is nearly high, but there are actually some anomalies that are showing up. So oh my gosh, now what's going on here, right? This is, this is new. Nobody's seen anything like this. There's never been a data set that's told us much about the granite underneath the sedimentary rocks until this. And this is telling us that there's a lot more going on than we first thought. This isn't just Sherman granite potentially getting closer to the surface. So that's really exciting because we want to understand what's going on with the overlying groundwater flow. It's good to know what's going on in the basement, alright? So this is a direct data set to show us that something interesting is going on there. If I could have the next slide? So we have to understand this. This was a little bit of a twist that I'm sure Evo wasn't quite ready for, neither was I. And so we had to start doing some modeling to understand what was actually going on and putting units in and their spatial depths and their magnetic susceptibility. So it's also required us to go into the Laramie Range and find rocks that might be equivalent and actually measure their magnetic susceptibilities. And so this led to things like this, which is considered a forward model. Even though it says monzonite in that little blurb that's kind of in the, in the lower left, it's actually turns out to be equivalent, that anomaly really maps well, and it matches well with sort of the dotted line and the black line up there on the top, with a mafic dike. So there's some mafic dykes that go through the range. Generally, they're really small, they're scattered around. Sometimes you can see them in Google Earth because they kind of make a nice linear feature through, through the granite. But this one's huge. It's actually quite wide. It's actually kind of thick, so it's fairly significant. Now, what, why does it matter? I mean, why does, does changes in lithology in the igneous rocks matter? Well, rocks weather differently, alright? In fact, magnetic rocks have this cool little feature. If we go to the, to the next slide, please? They tend to be very iron-rich in magnetite. This is a magnetic mineral, a very, very strong magnetic mineral. It has a lot of iron and manganese. And the cool thing is when fresh water tends to react with those minerals and help weather them a little bit faster. It turns that iron into more of a hematite, a rust. And basically, it becomes weakly magnetic at that point. So it loses some of its magnetic strength as it oxidizes. So, and if we look kind of where, if we overprint the geology and the location of the wellfields and I-80 on this magnetic anomaly, we can kind of see that a lot of those major structures, like the Pilot Hill monocline and edges of the Red Hills Fault and how it extends up into the interstate and all those faults that we were seeing on the geologic map, all kind of start to fall in areas that make a little sense relative to where this mafic dike is running in and on top of the granite. And so it's a portion of things that we didn't expect to be there. That variability in the magnetic signature strength is probably a really decent indication that, that fresh water can move through that area and interact with those rocks a little better in that little corridor, sort of facing the I-80 monitoring wells, than it does as you get closer to Soldier Spring or you go further north of the interstate from mile mark three-twenty. Now, that doesn't explain the magnetic anomalies that are weaker over towards the summit. The cool thing in a way is that the government gulch well interacts with a different member than just the Sherman alone. If you're on I-80, after you kind of go past the summit interchange, there's a thing, an outcrop that shows up that has this unit that's referred to as pharaoh monzonite. So pharaoh should already clue you into the fact that it's pretty iron-rich already. It's a different sort of member of the, that sequence of the rocks that were cooling off a long time ago in the middle of the crust. But again, it's highly magnetic. It's not as magnetic as the mafics, but it's still there. And the cool thing is it's actually present in the government gulch wells. We saw it in the magnetic susceptibilities there. So there's some complications with the bedrock that makes us really sort of wake up a little bit and pay attention above just the thickness to the bedrock, which we'll, we'll get on in here in a second. So if I could have the next one? So bear in mind, we got a lot more information to start looking harder at the bedrock. So this is looking back at the resistivity data and the estimated depth to the top of the bedrock from those data sets. It's just a contour view using a plane datum that's at the summit essentially. So we're looking to depth below the surface or below that datum. So the color scale represents that as well as the contours. You can see that overall, it looks like a pretty regular, for the most part, east-west kind of gradient, which one might expect for the bedrock to do since it's shallower in the east than in the basin. But it's not perfectly gradient-like. You can see where I've put that black circle, that it almost looks like a little pinch point. So you've got higher regions to the south and to the north a little bit. And then you also have a really interesting thing where, when you look at where the municipal wellfields are, there's a little deeper thing, like a little almost kind of crescent-looking trough in the bedrock surface that's really fascinating. And so you start to want to look harder at what that bedrock is doing over the whole sort of area, which is, this is the first approach. If we go to the next slide, we'll look at it kind of in 3D in dimensional view. So if we could go to the next slide, please? Alright, so again, this is just kind of looking a little more realistically at the depth as we see it. And you can see on sort of the north and south parts where the slope break happens, there's more of a higher spot or flatter spot. And one can imagine a sort of funnel-like structure as those arrows sort of outline that's heading kind of in the north-westerly direction, which would be out of the image towards Pope Springs and us. But there's that interesting little depth thing that basically sits where the springs tend to be. So you know, that's, that's sort of an interesting view. Certainly, the question remains is what do we see overall in the resistivities? And do they sort of reflect, you know, an enhanced potential movement to the northwest at that deeper level? You know, again, we'd be talking about the water level movement in the fountain and the lower casper alpha, so the very deeper, you know, high, higher capacity reservoir, so to speak. At least that we're interpreting at this point. So the question is, can that stuff move more towards the city essentially? It's, you know, probably structurally bound again. So if we think about the magnetics data, there's sort of where that slope break happens, the transition from green to yellow, there's, there tends to be more faults. There's a lot more little bending going on when the rock types were being forced up by the granites further east, you know? So you can kind of imagine there's, you know, these were fairly stiff materials and then we're getting pushed up effectively and, and so things broke, alright? And so whenever you have creases, you tend to have more breakage. And so that's kind of what I'd, I'd say we're looking at for the most part. But that has implications, right? It has implications for how the water is going to come off the range. So let's go to the next slide. And what we're looking at here is taking the resistivity data cube, which in its full 3D-ness, and just slicing it. We're basically slicing at depths and looking at what the resistivity values are. The resistivity colors are again, blue for low resistivities or more saturated conditions that are permeability influenced by structures probably. Highs, the pinks, the reds, they're more resistive, not a whole lot of saturation generally. So again, this is looking at 250 meters. The depth is at the top there. Again, it's kind of weird because we're sloped, right? So our whole cube is sort of offset. And so it's, 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 you gotta kind of think about everything sort of dipping to the west a little bit from a surface vantage point. But anyway, if you go straight down from the surface, 250 meters, which is basically 820 feet, what would you see, right? If we get rid of all the, everything above it? So effectively, you're seeing the granite, I mean, or the igneous rocks, you know, generally less, more resistive all the way through, a few spots as you go further to the, to the west, near the springs, where things are a little lower resistivity. Doesn't infer that there's direct connection, but certainly, given that weird structural thing that we saw in the basement's surface, wouldn't be surprising that there are more fractures probably on that part of the bedrock. And we already know, or I should say the city knows, that the, there is a wellfield hydraulic connection between Pope and Soldier, right? We don't pump both at the same time. We basically have one running, which is effectively Soldier, and the other one just hangs out. Because if we pulled both at the same time, we'd have some recovery issues in Soldier. So they're both equally productive, but it's really more dependent municipally on Soldier at this point in the game. Again, we saw basement things going on that would probably lead us to think there's, there's more higher fracture density in that part of the area. And so that connection hydraulically that we empirically see in the wellfields makes sense or kind of starts to feel like it makes sense. Other than that, you know, if we look at the I-80 region around the monitoring wells for I-80 or mile mark three-eighteen roughly, you know, there's not a whole lot, all those structures, all those faults that are mapped at the surface don't have a whole lot of things associated with it in the deep basement. I mean, there's a few areas that, you know, are a little lower and may be representing something that, you know, might be lower resistivities and fault structures in the basement that are propagating further. But we'll see how that changes as we start to come up. So right now, again, we're at 820 feet. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the same slice at 190 meters, which is basically 623 feet. So we're in the, generally, we're in that lower alpha fountain range. We're above the bedrock, especially to the west. When we're to the east, we're obviously still in the bedrock, which is why those zones look really pink and hot. You can also see that, that higher resistivity stuff in the Red Hills Fault area in the southern part of the grid towards the center, right? So again, there's that bedrock influenced high that's influencing the soldier monocline certainly. And again, it's likely that if we were to say where these waters would flow ambient-wise without the municipal wellfields pumping, those waters in that deeper reservoir would probably be flowing towards town, right? They're, they're, they're moving with gravity, but they're not just moving to the west. They're being diverted slightly to the north. You can see that really low target bullseye right kind of near the highway. Again, we can't say for sure, right, at this point, if those fault zones that are mapped at the surface extend to that depth, but certainly they could. And certainly, they are, you know, pretty chock-full of water, more than likely, compared to other areas surrounding it. But if you think about it, if that funnel structure actually exists and more of that deeper reservoir is moving in that direction, there's no reason to think that the slope change wouldn't cause a ponding effect a little bit. You know, but again, general movement ambient-wise would probably be that direction with very little flow towards the wellfields, but we're pumping them. So we're, we're going to pull some of that potentially if there's connection at that deeper level. Now, it's a little tricky to say. When we build in the final structural 3D model, based on everything we know and more detailed look at what's causing what and what influences what on each particular line, you know, we might be able to make arguments about what's going on. But let's think about this again, right? 623 feet, generally deeper than most of our residential and municipal wells are going. This water is basically not anything we use. It's, it's the primary hydraulic pathway, but we're not using it. We're usually tapping things much shallower. So if I could have the next slide, we'll come up a bit more, about 100 feet. So this is 160 meters, that's basically 520 feet. We're at the top of the lower alpha member typically. We're still seeing mostly granite on the east side. But as we go further along, you start to notice that those low resistivities start to match up with more of the north-south fault things like the Red Hills. So it's a little more likely that those faults might have influences into that upper zone. You know, hydraulically, that water is going to be coming up from below, right? It's going to be wanting to get lower pressure, not higher pressure. So stuff flowing down is not how the ambient system is going to work very well. But there's possibilities here that some of those sedimentary structures that we see at the surface could be influencing that level. If we move to the next slide, we're coming up further. So we're at 90 meters, so we're at like 295 feet, so like, let's say 300 feet. And now we've penetrated into the resistive layer, so the mid-casper formation, right? So that's kind of upper beta, mid-beta to sort of lower gamma, if we think about it in the drilled lithologies. And so we're pretty resistive even out at the wellfields. Like, we're not seeing a whole lot of low resistivities that look like it's connecting anything from the highway to Pope. So again, fairly isolated. So remember, if we're thinking about the question of contaminant transport, that stuff's coming from above, right? And it has to be, there's some certain qualities, right? We'll talk about those at the very end. So this stuff is coming down. It's not usually coming along, along that lower reservoir. If, if that lower reservoir were contaminated, it would have to happen up at the summit, right? Because those rocks are exposed up there, not in the basin deeper. So you can see there's, there's So you can see there's, there's basically resistive materials between that lower reservoir and anything we tap for residential and municipal above it. So the next one is, next slide is seventy meters. So it's not that much shallower. It's about two hundred and forty feet. Again, we start to get less resistive in those upper units that are primary sources of our, our residential and municipal water sources. Um, still, you know, there may be weaker connections, structurally dominant, those fault zones tend to be present. But if you look south in the Red Hills area, which is one of our worry faults for, for contaminant movement. You know, it's, it's low resistivity up by the interstate, but it's very high resistivity as you get closer towards soldier spring. And there doesn't look to be a good, a good sort of connection between the Red Hills and, and either Pope or soldier, right? At that point, um, there's still potential now because everything was resistive a little lower. Now everything's a little less resistive. So again, makes sense why Pope and soldier can, can communicate. Um, they're probably, you know, they, they would communicate better if the wells were deeper down to the fountain lower alpha level. But nonetheless, they're still communicating at this point, which is what we see empirically. Now, the last one, if we come up really shallow, if we come up to like thirty feet, forty feet, um, below the surface. Now everything looks resistive, right? We're in the basically on, we're been, we're in the unsaturated part of the Casper, right? So everything is basically resistant, except over by the springs. And that's where it's really conductive. It's really low, but it's not super low. All right. What we've, what we've done here is we've impacted the overlying Satanka. Overlying Satanka is a clay rich unit compared to the Casper. Its resistivity is inherently lower. So when we get in that very near surface material, um, and we could probably even argue that it's, it's not exactly rock and at some points. But it's, it's relatively close and Satanka, even if it's weathered, is going to be releasing a lot of clay rich or red soils, you know, that we all try to grow in. Um, some of that is sandier, but it's still much more clay rich and silt rich than anything in the Casper. So we're seeing basically a change in lithology. So again, if, if any of us out there were, were so inclined to map where the contact was between the Satanka and the Epsilon and the Casper formation. Uh, looking at the really shallow response of the EM data would be a, a good way to do that. Um, all right, and let's move ahead now. Um, this is sort of a conceptualized, really simplified model based on just looking at a cross sections. Um, again, we're looking at our primary groundwater pathway, uh, slightly above, uh, the granite basement. The granite basement is not uniformly Sherman. Um, structures tend to be associated with the changes in lithologies in the basement. So the Red Hills Fault Zone, especially on the southern end of the line are probably, um, related to that, that Mafic Dyke intrusion into the Sherman granite that's buried. Um, and that's what's indicated by all those lines. Uh, there's question marks because obviously we don't know the details of how big some of those fault zones are that connect across the beta and lower gamma. Um, but you know, certainly there's water movement as you go down the slope. Uh, there's a lot more water movement when the slope break happens and there's more flattening, um, as you enter the basin. But certainly, you know, upper member, so gamma and delta, which we tend to tap fairly regularly for water. Um, for various reasons, you know, municipally and, and, uh, residentially, you know, are, are really being fed by water coming up from below. Now certainly, you know, the highlights of how water moves and how much water is available would be better if we were looking, if we'd flown the survey in, you know, June. But, um, you know, it's kind of good to see what it looks like now because really now is that base level that, that, uh, that almost ambient state. That it builds on every year when there's a big slug of water from the snow melt that's coming down. So conceptually, this is what we're looking at as you go deeper into the basin. Obviously not only do you have water moving up along, you know, vertical transmission in these structures. Um, but you know, there's also sort of where the potentiometric surface and the topographic surface meet, which is what we call springs. So soldier spring, Pope's, you know, all those things are basically being influenced by that vertical transmissivity. And usually that little, that interface zone between the Satanka, which is generally an aqua tard as you go further west into the basin. And the upper parts of the Epsilon or the upper parts of the Casper are where you see those springs. Um, uh, whether you're going from Red Boots to north up towards, um, uh, the spur and incline area. So, um, yeah, it's a really important area. I mean, obviously our transmission is, we're sitting on top of, you know, two fundamentally, you know, kind of significant aquifers. Or reservoirs, I should say, and a major aquifer. That upper reservoir is fed from below typically, except probably during a little bit of time during recharge in the spring. Um, where it gets, it gets direct influence also, but more often than not through the rest of the year, that, that water in the upper layers. And the upper parts of the Casper are coming from below and that reservoir deeper is, is fairly consistent. I mean, even though we're looking at it in October, I mean, it'd still be one of those areas that would be really fascinating to get a lot more data from. But we have very few wells that actually, um, confidently go into the fountain, um, let alone transition into the, to the granite below. But anyway, we've gotten a little bit more knowledgeable, at least in this part of the small part of the basin about what we think is really going on and where it's happening. So if I could have the next slide, please. Um, I just wanted to give you all, uh, again, since one of our questions here is talking about contaminants. This is a basic diagram of, of what contaminants, petroleum based, uh, contaminants can potentially do. If, uh, there was a major spill and we did absolutely nothing about it at the exactly the wrong time, which would probably be spring. Um, uh, if you have gasoline dominant things, those are considered light non-aqueous phase liquids or L naples. They tend to sink only as far as the water table, but then they'll travel with whatever the ambient groundwater flow is. So again, if we're saying that something happened at mile mark three eighteen, um, if they weren't pumping at the wellfields, it's likely that that would flow towards town. If we're thinking about things that could actually go into the groundwater, that's going to be what's considered a dense non-aqueous phase liquid. Again, they're heavier than water. So when they actually reach the water table, they, uh, tend to go through and continue on until they reach an aqua tard. Which would force them to then spread with the groundwater flow. Um, and again, if there were no other pumping going on, likely would be moving more towards town. Um, if we go to the next slide, we'll kind of get a summary of where we're at in our grid area of where we say the deeper reservoir movement is. And this, so these arrows are interpreting that deeper hydrostratigraphic geophysical unit. So we're saying we have got gravity dominated flow, but it's being slightly modified by some uplift structures, especially in the basement. It would move more towards Pope and town. And in ambient sense, I'm sure there's draw from soldier because it's on and it runs all the time. Um, and then, you know, so there's going to be some deviations in the shallower units especially. Um, and if you go to the next slide. You can see we've shaded areas within the survey grid area where we believe there's enough fracturing that vertical transmissivity is happening at various levels. Um, so those shades are still basically, and the arrows are still basically pointing out where gravity dominated groundwater is going to be moving from the mountain front. But those, uh, those shaded areas are areas that we don't see, or we see low resistivities either within the granite level. And the overlying sediments or just in the overlying sediment. So we, we are inferring vertical transmissivity high points. Now, most of that is happening down by the wellfields in the lower part of the basin, which is, uh, you know, that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, there is some zones a little bit higher up on the hill where there are indications of, you know, quicker, quicker transmissivity vertically. Um, you know, there are springs further up the canyon that are known about and mapped. Um, Telephone Spring is one of those. Um, so it's not unheard of that, that there can be really extremely short pathways, uh, for some of that deeper reservoir movement. But, um, predominantly into the, to the municipal and residential units that we tap generally. Um, it has to happen further to the east. Um, so if we go to the next, uh, slide, basically it's the whole text blob about our sort of summary of where we've talked about and recommendations. So again, primary hydrologic unit, uh, for the mountain front recharge at this area is the lower Casper Alpha and the fountain formations. Um, higher stratigraphic members generally receive bottom up groundwater. I mean, that's not true all the time, right? We have, they're going to see recharge infiltration in April through July. But in terms of its bulk quantity, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state that we, we're probably looking throughout most of the year. That that those, that water is coming up from that secondary deeper reservoir into the shallower units as we go down and impact vertical transmission on structures. Um, certainly, you know, most of that happens around mile mark three twenty, which is kind of one of those big curves on I-80. Um, and so, um, besides that, we had the igneous basement, um, participating a lot more in what's going on. And obviously going to affect overlying, uh, drainage of the groundwater into the units and basically into the basin. We see that structure, that funnel like structure, just in the basic topography of the basement structure, which again is sort of bringing up lower resistivities. Inferring that it's directing groundwater that way. Generally, if we weren't pumping, uh, soldier springs or Pope springs, we probably would, uh, find that most of the ambient flow is probably moving towards Laramie and specifically city springs. So if we were to draw sort of a basinal, uh, you know, influence map, um, of that, especially of that deeper unit, of that deeper part of the Casper, that deeper reservoir. We would probably say that it's, you know, moving towards city springs. A lot of area is moving towards city springs. Um, it does look on the very, very southern edge of our thing, a little bit past soldier springs that we might have a small divide happening. So again, if we had more expansive coverage, you know, we could start to really define some of those kind of influence zones and influence sub-basins that might be really significant. But at this point, we can only see what little part we can see. Um, we also see that circular depression in the topographic surface of the bedrock right near the municipal wells. Um, it's easier to envision the empirical hydraulic connection between those two wellfields. If you think that that depression in the bedrock resulted at some point during the overlying sedimentary rock formation in higher fracture densities. So it makes a lot of sense that there's something in the bedrock, a depression effectively, that made the rock weaker above it in, in the Casper especially. And so it's probably has the ability to move water between those wellfields a lot better, um, than we see normally in other areas. And so that is super interesting and definitely a bedrock control. Um, in general, the, the groundwater connectivity between I-80 and the municipal wellfields occurs best either deep. Um, or in that sort of beta, upper beta to gamma, probably delta transition, right? We don't really sample too much of the delta because it's all dipping to the west. But nonetheless, um, there's kind of the lower and the upper. And the upper is what gets tapped at the I-80 monitoring wells, which is about a hundred and twenty-ish feet below surface. And that's basically kind of upper beta roughly. Um, and when we get closer to the town, closer to town, you know, we, and city springs especially, we see a lot more water in the gamma and, and delta. Um, and so again, we're, 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 we could have, you know, some hydrogeophysical connection between the I-80 area, area in that upper part especially. And it looks like we might have it in the lower part as well, but honestly, we don't tap those typically, uh, for any source of water. Um, so the likelihood that, you know, and, and the likelihood that any contamination reaches that level from a spill at the bottom of Telephone Canyon is really low. If there was a spill at the top of the summit, I mean, it could happen. It would go right into those units. But imagine it's going to take quite a while before it actually gets down to anywhere we'd notice. And if we were, and we have to be using those deeper reservoirs, uh, for it to really be a big significant impact that we see quickly. Um, now, uh, the shallower reservoir that we use, um, certainly if there was a problem on I-80, it seems like. You know, it could be possible if it got deep enough for a D naple to potentially impact those things now. Um, it's likely that pumping at the wellfields influences greatly what's going on at the bottom of the hole. So if we did absolutely nothing and it was the wrong time of year and there was an, an Alan apple or Dean apple spill at the bottom of the canyon, right around mile mark three nineteen to three eighteen. Um, yes, given enough time, maybe that would infiltrate down to the top of the water level. And we would start sampling it in the I-80 monitoring wells as well as at Pope Springs. All right. Good thing is we'd be seeing it at those two places first. All right. So if I could have the next slide, um, that goes to some of the potential recommendations. Um, under ambient conditions, it seems less likely that an I-80 spill would reach that lower structural. Well, like would get all the way through the unsaturated zone, hit the water table and start moving in those upper units. Right? In that upper reservoir that we tend to use. All right. Um, if we weren't pumping the wells, it would probably migrate more towards town. Um, but under the pumping condition, I'd say it's likely at this stage, um, that we would see it both at the I-80 monitoring wells. And we'd see it at Pope. Um, how quickly is a, you know, it would take a while, right? Because there's at least probably a hundred feet of unsaturated that it would have to somehow migrate through. So again, it would have to be us doing absolutely nothing, no emergency action plan, no, no response whatsoever. Um, and it would have to be raining like crazy or right at the wrong time when there's tons of water saturating those upper unsaturated units in the gamma. At that point in the highway. Okay. There's a lot that has to go on all at the same time for that threat to be realized. Okay? Now, again, trihydro study had some very good recommendations of other ways to mitigate what would happen at the surface if we did absolutely nothing. Um, so you know, it's, there are certainly things that we could think about. Um, the other, this is a little different. This is looking at really the really worst case scenario. Um, and if we just even took the simple steps of transitioning the I-80 monitoring wells and the Pope wellfield. To not only being sampling and or pumping wells, but we considered them more regular monitoring, sampling wells. And potentially could transition them into what are considered pump and treat wells. If needed, we would effectively intercept anything that actually was able to make it to that level in that upper reservoir that we use the most. All right. Now again, we need to prove that, um, that is conjecture and interpretation on our part right now. Um, that's year two goal effectively. Um, you know, can we actually, you know, see that and then what kind of timeframes are we working on here? But again, just from a practical standpoint, um, how we think about those two sets of wells might be really important. If again, we did absolutely nothing, um, and there was a, there was a problem. Um, again, there's a lot that has to go perfectly wrong for us to have a big threat. Um, certainly, especially at the lower part, we're looking at that upper reservoir that could basically, you know, get affected. The lower reservoir is less likely to, but it's certainly not a bad idea to think about maybe at that summit. Where we're kind of from that telephone spring area up to the interchange, potentially having a couple of sampling wells put in. Again, in the event that there was a spill up at the top. Um, because that would be a main line straight into that, that lower deeper reservoir that basically is the sponge. Which feeds our water supply into the shallower units throughout the year. Um, again, you know, there's sort of a short distance pathway for any contaminants in the upper bit at the bottom of the hill. There's a much longer pathway for any contaminants that would go from the top. But, um, you know, it is, it isn't impossible. But, uh, I think that given the, the plans, especially to revise and think more about sort of the emergency action plan. I think our likelihoods are extremely low. I'm not an actuary. So again, I can't give you even rough ideas of what numbers would be on those things. But just from a, just from the study so far and in this area and our, our information that we have. And hopefully by the end of next year or at the same time next year, we'll have sort of some modeling to either confirm or, or, you know, debunk everything that I've just said right now. Um, but, uh, it seems like that's a common sense look. Now, certainly the last recommendation is purely, um, you know, my, my desire, which is certainly, you know, that we conduct and find additional funding. To study more of, of this broader sense, allowing much more of the eastern side of the basin, uh, from north to south. Uh, not only would that help us municipally, um, and, and sort of from a resource management standpoint. But it would also allow us to start, you know, defining sort of areas that we think are critical. Um, that, you know, we. are critical, that, you know, we have to worry about shallower threats versus deeper threats and, you know, use potentially, you know, we, we, we probably have a lot of water underneath us, we don't know for sure. I mean, indications of that deeper reservoir, as we see it, has those ponding areas, which kind of makes sense. Again, if we were to target high production wells for anybody's use, certainly those would be the ones I would be interested in drilling first. But, you know, we don't really know, this is a much smaller kind of grid size than, than the, the whole area of the eastern basin and effects for the eastern basin. So, you know, maybe we can all petition the state to give us more money and do more of this. Sort of in a similar way to how the, the Conservation District in Cheyenne basically surveyed the other side of the range, actually, they did that not too long ago, they basically did the exact same things, different company, but same idea. And they're doing the exact same thing we're doing. They're looking at how their water is affected in a bigger scale. So, next slide please, and we'll kind of wrap up what next year is. We've, I've mentioned it countless times already, so we're really going to go detailed now to take everything we've built with the geophysics and the geology and make sort of a structural model that we can assign hydraulic properties to, or we'll use modeling software such as potentially the Modflow modpath from the USGS or some other potentially available codes, and start building some of those scenarios on basic recharge and contaminant transport. We're not going to build infinite numbers of models, I mean, that could be a lifetime experience, but certainly we'll build a few as plausibility studies and hopefully, you know, when somebody decides they need more detailed information on particular spots, they might take that information and build on it in future. So if I could have the last slide? Thanks. Sorry, I know this has gone on quite a ways, but as, 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 as the mayor mentioned, it was, it was quite a bit. I mean, the text part of the report was relatively short, the data portion is huge. The data is ready to be archived by both city or county or each, I don't exactly know, and I have to make those final arrangements, but at least up to this stage, everything's ready to be, you know, archived and accessed as needed. Again, I wouldn't imagine most folks have access to all the other software that we're tending to use, but nonetheless, they can look at the profiles, you could build, you know, your own 3D views if you were so inclined, things like that. But let me get any more questions, and then I guess we can wrap up my portion here.
Thank you very much. Dr. Carr gave us a lot of great information. Before we do questions, was there anything that your colleague Eva Smith wanted to include? And then we'll jump into questions.
I was just here for questions. Yeah. I think.
All right, counsel, questions? Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Carr, I'm, I'm curious if, this is probably a very base level question, so thank you for humoring it. At higher water levels, the, the sort of like April to June or July that you mentioned earlier, we, we would see that problematic closer to the surface, right? If there was a spill or, or some sort of contaminant entered specifically on the summit?
Well, certainly, you know, we don't have a, a real hard knowledge of how fast the recharge waters move through the system from the top down to the bottom. So yes, you're, you're right in that if we had a contaminant at the spill at the summit, it would directly infiltrate to those units that form that deeper reservoir. Now, how long it would take to move into the basin is a question we really don't have a firm grasp on directly. It's really hard to do tracer-type tests to, to determine that. You know, hopefully part of the groundwater effort will give us maybe some baselines on what would happen if there was a tracer that we could see hitting, you know, up at the government gulch area and then moving into the basin. But again, it's possible, certainly that, you know, it could happen, but the timeframes of it might be a lot slower and the spatial area that it covers would be larger than we may really detect an impact. Also, that, that doesn't change the fact that we normally don't drill wells to those, that level. So, you know, it would take time for it not, like if we had drills, drill holes to that level and we were sampling, certainly our chances of finding it quicker would be better than if we're seeing it sinuously move up the stratigraphic sequence along those vertical fracture zones. So I'd love to be able to answer your question in more detail, but I can't. And it's a great question. I mean, understanding the timing of the system is one part that we're, we're not overly well-suited to do observe, you know, observationally, but we can certainly start to try to predict it from a modeling standpoint. There'll be a lot more sort of assumptions made and there's a lot less like knowledge that we'll see. Like we can see a lot of the structural things and controls right now with the data we have, we can't predict the timing real well. If we were able to run the airborne survey in the June timeframe and we had a, a big, you know, data set for the June timeframe and a big data set for the October timeframe which we have, you know, we might be able to like difference those two and see what the changes really are and maybe predict how much like influx and, and how much sort of increased saturation would affect the system. But again, it's, it's something that that part would be hard to do. We've got it at a much smaller scale at the government gulch site. So again, you know, this fall, we'll, we'll, we'll obtain surface data that's in the dry portion of the year. We already recorded the wet portion in, in, in June. So you're asking a great question, and it, it occurred to us after we collected the airborne data that it's something we should think about, but if we, we can't really know well enough at this point, and we would need a lot more wells that actually transit all the way into the fountain from the surface in the basin. And honestly, I know Red Buttes does theoretically, there's challenges with our hole at Red Buttes, that makes it really challenging, but if we had a bunch more of those things, especially anywhere near the wellfields and the site and the city, I mean, maybe we could start to estimate those things, but it would still be, it'd still be a bit of a guess.
Cool. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up?
You bet, go ahead.
Thank you. And would you expect, I mean, would it, I know I'm asking for conjecture, but would you expect it to follow that sort of similar northwest sort of flow?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say, you know, we're looking at sort of the ambient condition, that's the other. The tricky part is, on top of that, you have the wellfield and it's, and Soldier's pumping all the time. So that is changing the flow at the bottom of the hill. Empirically, like I mentioned, we know that Pope and Soldier talk in, in a figurative sense. So water moves between those two wellfields quite easily, and, you know, we could argue about why, but nonetheless, we know that if we see it at Pope, it's going to be at Soldier. And it makes sense from a general standpoint that, you know, any, that whatever the ambient flow direction might be is going to be slightly perturbed as it gets closer to Pope, and it's going to be perturbed towards Soldier. So, yeah, we know that, we don't know the volume exactly. There are estimates of the recharge rate between the wells that the city water group knows. So there are some rough estimates of what would happen if, you know, we left the wellfield on and how long things would take to sort of happen. But again, that also kind of underscores the fact that if we kind of think about it in advance a little bit, besides the mitigation measures suggested by Tri-Hydro at the surface of years, you know, if we sort of think a little differently about our deeper situation, you know, especially at I eighty and maybe at the Pope field where we, where we have access, you know, we could probably mitigate a lot, quite a bit too, and have that sort of backup plan, so to speak, or back, maybe not a full backstop because we know Pope and Soldier talk, but I mean, certainly if there was a big problem at the wrong time and we did nothing, da-da-da-da-da, all those caveats that I mentioned, you know, if we turn Soldier off, that would probably help us, right? For a little bit, you know, that begs the question of where would we switch? You know, but we do sort of have the spur wellfield that we've never really understood quite exactly, but it is ready to go. So you could say that in a way we do sort of have a backup plan, but I think transitioning and having the city and the county think about transitioning the purpose of I eighty monitoring wells at their current location and potentially having something on site at Pope to do the same thing would, would get us a lot closer to being able to keep it in control.
Sure. And I, and I appreciate that, Dr. Carr. Part of my curiosity is, you know, I, I do think it would be helpful to know a little more about the higher up levels. If twenty twenty has proved anything, it's that all the things can go wrong in a row. And so I, you know, I, I think it does warrant a little bit deeper dive. That's probably a bad unintentional pun.
No, I, I, I mean, in some ways, it's kind of a reasonable pun. I mean, again, in sort of that recommendations and things, I sort of say, I mean, if we were prudent, we would also not only improve our, our look at I eighty monitoring well and, and something at Pope, but we would think about mile mark, you know, three twenty-two at the summit. You know, again, our likelihood of, of something bad happening up there is probably pretty low, the, the likelihood that it would affect us would, is lower. But, you know, if we want to be covering our bases, that would be something, a couple of monitoring wells that would allow us to pump and treat if needed on an, on an immediate basis would be useful. And there as well. And it wasn't, I would say in some ways, the Tri-Hydro effort was great, it focuses more on the lower part of the canyon, which is awesome, that is certainly a very immediate threat to where we get most of our water now, residentially and municipally. But if we're thinking about what sources those levels, that's what puts us on top of the hill a little bit. And, you know, a, a monitoring well that, that's a city and potentially the county or maybe even the DOT has best of interest in maintaining, which allows us to grab samples and especially allows pump and treat access if there was need be, would be prudent. And I would only imagine maybe two, honestly, we're not talking an entire wellfield or anything up there, but you've got to, you've got to know something, right? It's got to be accessible in the areas that are strategic. And so really, our strategic areas are mile three eighteen at the bottom of the hill and, and mile three twenty-two at the top of the hill.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me occupy so much time.
Thank you for your questions. Vice Mayor Gabriel, and then Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Carr, just curious, you've covered quite a bit here tonight, I was just wondering, and you've been over some of these things that you've learned. I was curious if you could summarize maybe a couple of things that you've learned that you didn't know before? You've talked about the fault structure is something that you've been able to learn a little bit more about, but could you summarize for us about some of the things that you learned here in this first phase that you didn't know before?
Yeah, certainly. One of the main things is how much more the basement really contributes to that overlying groundwater flow effect. The structures that we see in the sedimentary units as we come down the hill effectively are more influenced by the basement than we had previously understood. A lot of that just had to do with our inability to see what's there. The magnetics data, which highlighted that, that really strong magnetic anomaly sort of trending in a very odd way to the north-south structure of the basin was huge. That mapping in detail of what the topographic bedrock surface actually does, again, highlights some of that structural influence that we see at the surface and the geologic mapping as well as that vertical transmission of the flow, which again, was hypothesized, was understood that we were seeing upward transmission of, of groundwater at points, you know, still, we don't know very much detail except out in the survey area. You know, we can map it in a lot more detail, but there's still lots of areas outside of this, this area that we don't understand, that we, we assume there's a lot of vertical transmission going on, but we're not able to really pinpoint it. So I would say that is one of the main things. Certainly, you know, the extent to which the lower deeper reservoir, as I refer to it, in the fountain and lower half, alpha, how pervasive it is throughout this survey area makes me wonder how pervasive it is throughout most of the eastern side of the basin. You know, is it one of those sort of things we never really thought about because it's so much more expensive to drill that extra two to four hundred feet? You know, but would it provide a, a, a much more reliable source and less threatened generally? So I mean, again, that's a bit of conjecture on top of an observation, but, you know, I think that was really surprising. I've, I've, and others have had sort of ideas that, you know, there was a lot of interesting things happening at the fountain level based on, you know, some of the residences that are up on the hill that use it as a water source as well as a little bit of information we have at the bottom of the hill. But, you know, it's really fascinating to see that, that, that sponge, so to speak, is actually pretty extensive. And, you know, it's reacting to things like the bedrock surface and what the bedrock's doing and changes in the bedrock composition. And so those things were really previously unknown. I mean, we would have needed an infinite slew of drilling data to even start to approach that. So this, this, this small data set really has illuminated a lot of controls that we kind of assumed were there, but none, didn't really have a whole lot of empirical evidence for.
Thank you. I was just curious if Ms. Smith would like to maybe offer a couple of comments about her study and maybe some of the interesting things that she found.
You know, a lot of this for me was learning how to use the programs and processing the data and eliminating the bad data. So it's been really cool to see how such a large-scale study can show down deep and also how it can be connected so well to the hydrology in the area as a student.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Carr and, and Eva, Ms. Smith, for, for all your work on this. I had a little internet problem early on in the presentation, and you may have answered this question already, but I'm wondering if this presentation will be shared with the county as well?
Yes, in fact, sort of, we, the, the schedule hasn't really been set with the county, but I've been in communication with the, the, the county planning office who usually facilitates this effort. And so I'm just sort of waiting at this point for them to schedule the time, and then we'll, we'll basically make the same presentation. They already have the same report, and like I said, the, the data is really put together, so we just need to make sure that the city and the county both are archiving it in a way that's accessible, and that hopefully will happen soon. Again, hopefully soon, the commissioners will have time that we can actually, you know, get together and, and discuss the same thing with them.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Weaver, did you have anything?
No, thank you.
Counselor Doherty, anything? Okay, Counselor Stalder, and then we'll go back to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me ask another question. I wanted to ask about some of the data that we didn't get, and if you could give me an idea of like how far on either side of the interstate we were not able to measure, just, you know, because of the helicopter. I think I asked that question last time, and you explained why we couldn't get that close, but like how many feet away from the interstate are we talking about that we didn't get data for?
I mean, basically, there's a corridor that's probably about fifty to a hundred feet on each side of the right-of-way, so basically the top of the canyon hill, that helicopter's able to transit, but, you know, it's really pretty much a steep drop straight to the right-of-way in most of those cases. And so technically, we don't have a data coverage there, so... So now, we can still interpolate across with the data, but I mean, again, it's a little bit of unknown. Typically, in those kind of scenarios, if there was real concern, which is valid, certainly, an approach, and I mentioned this kind of last year when we first talked about the whole project, was there could always be a transition to more ground-based efforts, especially along the interstate. And now that we kind of have sort of mile-mark targets, maybe revisiting that discussion is a good thing, right? So we could do more focused ground efforts in the right-of-way. So obviously, we would need to, you know, talk to YIDOT about access and permissions. But certainly, filling the gap, at least at the surface level, for the first couple hundred feet in areas that we now think are critical, like in the mile mark, sort of three seventeen to nineteen zone, and maybe up at the top, you know, in the three twenty-two area, would be a useful next step. Again, you know, prior to this, we would have been more inclined to suggest you do the whole thing, which is a much bigger, longer, you know, more costly effort. Now that we have these data, even though we sort of lack a little bit of data density there, you know, also still inclines us to think that, you know, right next to the interstate and in those areas that we think, you know, are gonna be high, sort of high-risk areas potentially, or higher risk than we even thought before. You know, a surface effort or maybe even a new drilling effort, maybe in conjunction with, you know, implementation of a monitoring well system or, you know, potential pump and treat system. So those are really good questions. I mean, we have gaps, certainly. That's not unusual. It's really kind of a question of, you know, how do we refill them and what would be the best approach? Likely would be either a drilling or a ground-based geophysics approach to fill in the gap.
Thank you. And would that apply where you didn't get data right around the well? I would assume that would be a pretty vulnerable spot, just as fifty to a hundred.
It could be. I mean, certainly, there's, we have actually acquired data at the wellfields, surface data, because the areas are large enough that we actually have been sort of combining some surface data at the wellfields at Pope and Soldier in combination to sort of filling the gaps, as well as looking at that question of what the spring looks like versus the fall. So in a way, we've started to do that a little bit. We don't have infinite rain. I mean, we can't go wherever we want. We're very restricted to the city properties. But at this stage, at least, you know, there's, some of that has already kind of happened. It isn't really too much of, you know, where we've gone in the big survey of what you've been presented so far. But there is a little bit of that going on. You know, certainly, one of the, you already mentioned really the main sort of hole, which is, you know, right aligning there, right away, the interstate. But again, I would argue that if a prudent thing based on the information we have is that we focus on, you know, smaller areas that we feel are much more a threat than the entire, you know, I-80 corridor from top to bottom.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Carr, just curious, are there any more trips, flying trips planned? Or do you have the sufficient data that you need?
This is, this is, this is all we need for now. I mean, certainly, it would be a wonderful world if there was a funding source to let us do more. But, you know, at this point, that doesn't exist. So I think the nice thing is we've, I would say, this has been a nice case history for both sort of our area, Mississauga City and County, as well as, you know, the state. Certainly, there's been two surveys of this caliber, ours and the Cheyenne study. I'm sure folks in the state were paying attention to both. Hopefully, this will inspire some to think about this as more of a standard thing that we should be doing at municipal aquifer understanding on a larger sort of statewide scale. But certainly, you know, the efforts that have been made locally here and as well at the Conservation District across the hill are groundbreaking in that respect. And so we'll see. I wouldn't say that it's impossible, we'll do more. I'd love to, but again, we need to find a source for that and purpose. This had a great purpose in that, you know, it had direct understanding knowledge that could help us in planning, as well as the research ends, which, you know, we're, we have both. Certainly, from both the university standpoint and my standpoint, as well as council and commissioner standpoint, you know, there's a little bit of both. Because really, our lack of knowledge in the deeper parts, especially of the bigger aquifer and how it interacts with itself as a system is still mostly unknown. We've gotten a little closer to understanding with what we did, but we're still a long ways to go.
Thank you.
Counselor McKinney or Counselor Schuster, anything?
I have one question, Dr. Carr. Should we have a couple of, and this, this doesn't have so much to do with contamination as it does capacity. Should we have a couple of years of severe drought in Albany County? What is the potential? I know I saw the recharge graphs that you had. It seemed to be quite profound on the volume of water from the winter up to the summer with the, most of the recharge happening in the spring. Would we be able to remain, having the springs that we have as a source of water if we had two or three years of severe drought? Is there, I guess the question I have, is there enough volume in the Laramie Basin and maybe perhaps the Medicine Bow Reservoirs or whatever, ground reservoirs, for us to have reliability on a water source should we have two or three years of severe drought?
That's a good question. Certainly, you know, we've had fluctuating water level years. I'm not, I'm not as well-versed on sort of, sort of our recent history on water effects and drought effects. But certainly, I understand that there's been times where we've had, you know, sort of challenges at the springs and the shallow wellfields and residential wells. They're not quite as prolific in the last two or three years. We've had better water recharge. But certainly, again, you know, this study sort of highlights the fact that we're, we're getting smaller amounts of water directly input to those main shallower reservoir units that we tap. Certainly, one answer to your question would be, maybe we should start thinking about exploring at the deeper level a little more often to understand or start to gain more understanding about what that deeper reservoir, sort of the lower Casper and the fountain right above the granite actually can do. Certainly, conjecturally, based on our data, there are lower resistivities by a factor of ten in that rock unit in those, well, sort of hydrostratigraphic units there, that kind of moshed thing together that we see. So certainly, I mean, we, as a group in our region, have not looked at that as a source of water. Certainly, it's a potential. And in fact, you know, one might argue, based on what little we see at this point in our survey area, that it might be a more productive potential with less threats inherently, because it's deeper. And it's probably more consistent through the year. So, long and short is, you're right. There's certainly, if we had more sustained drought times, we might see more effects at both the springs and the shallower residential and municipal well depths. Because, you know, most of the year, we're looking at that bottom-up kind of transmissivity of the groundwaters. So more of it is coming up regularly through there. I mean, certainly, there's that pulse that we see in the spring that we take advantage of. Some of that is direct infiltration on the rock, on the units, you know, east of town. But, you know, if you think about it, there's, there isn't always that much snow over there. I mean, compared to when you get higher up and you're actually in the trees. And so still, more of our recharge is probably going into that deeper thing, the deeper reservoir that I refer to. And so we don't really use that as a source. In fact, you know, except for what, that one, the one well at Red Buttes that I'm aware of, because I drilled it. And this study, there's very little that's put us there to help us understand, you know, what's really going on. There's always been an idea from pump testing, a little bit from Huntin and Lundey's work. And that kind of gives us an idea that those units could be actually fairly productive compared to the upper units. But we really probably could argue that we don't have enough data. But certainly, you know, in situ borehole data, but certainly, I would look at it as a potential. You know, that either as a research effort or even just an exploratory effort. You know, the government Galtwell is sort of a first pass at understanding snowmelt recharge, and it's higher up in the system. So certainly, you know, we've had thoughts about understanding what's going on a little better. But, I mean, we're, we're one small point in a much larger area. And again, we don't have any basin wells to help us understand what's really going on. Like I said, I do have red buttes. If we had more time, I could tell you the challenges in that hole and that hole. All the challenges in that hole are at the fountain. And so I've always had the hypothesis for that hole that there's so much water basically in that unit that it basically likes to bridge holes. So it's really challenging to have open holes in the fountain, in the basin, based on my one experience hole. But that just has intrigued me for the last six years about what's going on down there. And this, these data that we've collected with the survey has reinforced that desire to really understand what's happening at those deeper levels. But certainly, we could look at it as a deeper drill target. You know, we're very fortunate in the eastern Laramie Basin to have water so plentiful, so shallow. A lot of places in the state, on regular practice, drill two thousand feet for good water. So we're in a very fortunate situation where if we started to see troubles, we could easily back up to trying to drill deeper to the, towards the top of the granite. And right now, indications are from our data on this survey that that would be a useful, you know, backup idea.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the public. Do we have any questions for either Dr. Carr or Eva Smith regarding this survey?
Maximus Basari.
Maximus, go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Carr, thank you for your presentation. Obviously, it went, it contained a lot of hard work, and I'm sure it will be a great dissertation one day for your grad student. I had some questions. You may have answered them. My first question was, who funded this study? And then the second question, if you could, is more of a common sense question. What would you say is the overall health of the Casper aquifer, both in terms of quantity and quality? And what I could decipher, you said that obviously, there is more sustainable and secure sources of water at deeper level. And then you kind of explained some black swan events. You know, if there was a spill on top of the summit, right in the middle of the spring, you know, kind of nothing but the net kind of situations. So the question really is, would you recommend, and it sounds like you have experience digging deeper wells past two hundred, four hundred, and even, you know, you mentioned some cells being below six hundred feet level. So would that be probably best use of public resources instead of trying to mitigate against black swan events, if you will, to ensure we have not only sources of water sustainable at the shallower levels, but have emergency sources at much deeper levels that could also be more secure in terms of contamination? So that's the question for you. And then I have a couple of questions that I think maybe the city staff could answer. I understand that not everyone gets the Casper aquifer within city limits, and some folks are getting treated water that is kind of discolored and smells quite bad. And, you know, it's chlorine. So the question is, who decides who gets what? Obviously, Casper aquifer being the preferred source of water. And not too many people would like to have treated water because of potential harm to their health and long-term effects. So really, the question is, we go to great lengths to protect the Casper aquifer, and that's absolutely valid and warranted. But why is it that essentially, members of the public are not getting that benefit? And instead, they're getting what I would presume, and I'm not a hydrologist, is a far inferior quality of water? Thank you.
Okay, well, let me, let me just address those that you started with. So basically, the funding for this project came from both, as mentioned by Mr. Parkin at the start. So the funding basically was sourced from city, the county, and the county emergency management fund and the grant that they received. So this is basically local source for this smaller study. Obviously, again, very focused on relevant issues for sort of any effects that both the county and the city would be forced to react to in this, in, you know, in that worst-case scenario. Then if we move on to sort of the questions of, you know, resource use and potentials, in some ways, in an ideal world, we'd like all of the above, right? So we'd like, you know, there'd be, to be funding for the city to not only, you know, plan ahead and have monitoring capabilities and potentially pump and treat if a bad, if that black swan event happened and in both areas where we sort of think, you know, the effect would do the most good. But we'd also like to say, you know, do, do we want to have a backup system that maybe looks at a deeper well? And before we even do that, we really would want to have either the state potentially or, you know, some other entity potentially outside of the city or the county, you know, look into more of the detailed potential of that deeper reservoir, which we know exists. We know it's there. We don't really use it. So do we have a lot of plentiful, you know, groundwater available to us? In theory, probably. Again, we don't know enough. This is a very small area in a very large basin. And it is really focused on the eastern side. But nonetheless, you know, it looks to now that we actually, you know, have a lot of good backup if, you know, things that we currently do were to be, you know, challenged. Now, that being said, we also have, I do, I am aware that the city is, you know, has backup plans on their municipal supply. Again, we sort of hinted at that with a question earlier about, you know, transitioning. So if something were to potentially get out of control and threaten our current groundwater operations at Soldier, certainly, there's a backup field. We call it the spur well field. It's north of town or on the north side of town, really. And so certainly, there's already been, there'd been thought previously, years ago, about, you know, what to do. You know, having one thing to get your water from is always potentially risky compared to having, you know, multiple input points. And so I would say, again, you know, to answer your question, it'd be ideal if we had funds to do all of the above. How we prioritize is really beyond, you know, my scope. Certainly, it would go to the city council and the county commission to prioritize where they feel, you know, funds efforts are the best spent. And then, I mean, I appreciate your question. It's a great question. I would say, in a lot of ways, we interpret, you know, a good reliable source to be deeper if we were consistently drilling below six hundred feet. But, you know, again, we would have to start doing it on a regular basis. And I'm sure we'd learn things that are challenging. We'd find places that are probably better and worse than doing it all the time, you know. I mean, there's costs associated with deeper exploration that the county and the city has never had to deal with. But if you go to Newcastle, they regularly drill two thousand-foot wells. So they are much more attuned, probably, municipally, for spending, you know, a lot more money on their municipal water efforts than we are. So, I mean, there's a lot of things. That's a very difficult question. I mean, more study of the system as a whole, however we do it, through drilling projects, deeper drilling or more spatially separated drilling for shallow targets could also be viable. So the city has done that in the past. So the city has done that in the past, certainly. And, you know, kind of, I would argue, has a pretty good handle on where we could go if things went really awry at any one place. There are certain details sometimes that are challenged, but certainly, I, I'd say we're fairly well-suited. I mean, certainly, we're, my study or this study, you know, has given us a little bit more to think about. We've had more to think about, too, in the past with what Trihydro did, which was really valid. So again, you know, having that knowledge base will allow us, as a community, to really get better plans in place so that, you know, when something, that black swan event happens, wherever it happens, hopefully we'll be, you know, have that whole emergency checklist, right? You know, step A, do this, step B, do that, you know, you know, and mitigate that response so quickly we have no threats. So in some ways, not quite understanding how volumetrically significant the upper and lower water supplies in the Casper, you know, is, is, is not as critical. I would say we've survived as a community for quite a long time, not knowing much of anything, except that springs come out and they produce a lot of water. We've been super lucky that nothing really significant has happened to date. And so, I mean, I think that doesn't mean that knowledge doesn't help us make better planning so that it never becomes a reality. But I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of good things. This is just kind of getting a look at the deeper system that we hadn't quite done yet. And so this is a certain start to that. As for the, for your other questions about sort of distribution and water quality, I really have to step aside on that. But certainly, in terms of volume, I think, you know, this isn't, this is a sort of hopeful thing. I mean, I think our threats to contamination of what we use is low. Again, it assumes that we basically do nothing, which I think is almost impossible currently. But, I mean, that doesn't mean whatever we do couldn't be done better. So again, I'll, I'll pass on your questions later for the, really the city. And I'll let the mayor sort of step in in terms of whether he wants that to get addressed further.
Okay, do we have other public comments?
Nancy Sindalar.
Nancy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Carr, for your presentation. I've got a couple of questions. Are you hearing me?
Yes, we can, Nancy. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I didn't really understand the explanation of why there is more danger to us if a spill happens during the recharge season as compared to the dry season. That may be just because it's been 30 years since I took rocks for jocks. Does the city springs on Grand Avenue get the water from the higher or the lower level? I mean, how far in does our pipe go? And then a pipe dream one, the possibility of taking the information you gave us and putting it into a 3D model like the ones they have at the 3D lab on campus. I think I could learn a lot more and understand it better, and a lot of people would understand it better if they could walk into this 3D animation. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me start from the last, and I'll move forward on that. So certainly, that's, that's effectively the 3D visualization as things we're doing right now. And your suggestion about putting it in the cave is actually a great one. Certainly, there, there is no real physical reason why this data couldn't be transited into that format. Now, currently, we're already doing those 3D views and modeling. You know, it wasn't part of a lot of what we showed today, but that, you know, is one of those things that sometimes those views are a little challenging versus just looking at the raw data and things like that to start. So now, in, in terms of the first question, with why that, that period of sort of April to, to July is really critical for any sort of infiltration, that's really, again, boils back to our snowmelt time. So the likelihood of vertical transmission from the surface into the aquifer from above is more likely then, right? Because we have the snowmelt recharge. Now, that doesn't mean it...
Water.
Right, right. It doesn't mean that it couldn't happen if, like in September of 13, when we had that crazy September where it just rained and rained and rained. Those times can happen, but they're a lot more, you know, uncommon, really. But the consistent time that we would have a lot of vertical transmission possibility of infiltration waters would be during that April to, to July time. And so that's kind of why I make the assumption in my, in my description that, I mean, that would be, that would certainly be one of the most wrong times to have inaction. Because if we're worried about, you know, a contaminant spill migrating to the level of the water table regardless, that is a time when there's a lot of transmission from the surface. The rest of the year, it's less likely, it's less to, it's more to, you know, groundwater transmissivity from below than it tends to be from above. So that doesn't mean it's exclusive, but it just means it's more likely. So that's really why that is, is kind of the, the really important part.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Caleb Heine.
Caleb, go ahead.
There, can you see me okay?
We can see you and we can hear you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I just, I saw a lot of really good data. I, I think your research was very in-depth, and I think, well, you did a great job. And I hope people are getting the puns here because it's really fun. And I'll try not to keep it too deep. But I, I think you did a great job on getting all this data, and a lot of hard work went into this. I really do love the backup plans that you have here. Going off of what you said, the tracer-type tests are really, really hard and difficult. What you said was to measure the recharge levels. The most accurate way to do that is actually to drill a well. And I think the ci, the city should definitely start putting resources and going and gathering a bunch of grants to accomplish this because it's going to do two things for us. It's going to both accomplish the research as well and accomplish a secondary plan just in case the higher levels would be contaminated. So I guess I'd just really push for drilling a second, very deep well. I think that's a really good, good thing to do. And yeah, I, I think you're on the right track, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heine. Okay, other public comments or questions or concerns?
I see no one else raising their hand or unmuteing their arm.
Thank you, city clerk. We're going to go back to council for one last opportunity to bring up council's concerns, questions, comments. And then we're going to wrap up this, this work session and go to the next. I see Council Harrington. Oh, Council Weaver. Council Weaver. Council Harrington, is your hand up or no? Okay, Council Weaver, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I may have... Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brad, thanks a lot for this presentation. It's, it's great, and I, I'm glad it was able to be completed. And I remember your presentation to the council several months ago. And it's good to see that work product come out. I wanted to make a comment that I think what we need to be able to do as the city council and also with our environmental advisory board is start to think about how this information that we're gathering from these projects that have been undertaken can be integrated into our, into our longer-term aquifer management strategy and protection strategy that we are on schedule to reevaluate and update in the near future. And I hope that you will be willing, through your various volunteer commitments that you've made to the city, be willing to help guide some of that process as we integrate what we've learned from this project into, into some of the good research that has already be, already been done so that we can have a comprehensive, or at least a more comprehensive aquifer protection, management and protection plan going forward. So, thank you, and also make that sort of preemptive request to be available to help us with that. And if you want to weigh in on any of that, please feel free, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council Weaver.
Certainly, if, just to do a quick comment on that, certainly, yeah. I should really thank council, as well as the commissioners and the county emergency management, you know, director, basically, for, for allowing this additional work to happen, honestly. So it really is a two-way street. So, I mean, I do also think that there's, there's a lot more effort to be talked about, especially as we progress into a new discussion of the aquifer protection plan. And so certainly, these data can help us not only think about emergency management planning, but certainly long-term aspects, as you mentioned, Council and Weaver. So that, I mean, I guess really the only threat to my potential involvement is if the university decides to budget cut. And so, and then it may just free me up to be less restrained than, than I am, you know, as a university employee. But anyway, I appreciate your, your efforts and the council's efforts and the commission's efforts, as well as the emergent, county emergency management folks, which really, you know, had impetus to, to continue this work. So, and, and how it develops into the future really is, is a good question and potential planning that the city and the county will need to, to basically undertake. I would agree that the environmental advisory committee is a useful tool, which kind of bridges those two organizations a little bit and should have some thoughts on, on potential plans. Again, I'll, you know, as probably most all of you know, I'm currently sitting on the EAC, but that always is subject to change, potentially. But, I mean, as a resident, and I assume I'll still be here and have input.
Go ahead, Council Weaver. He's got a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only to say this. The purpose of these research projects has been and continues to be to guide the public policy process as much as it is to learn more about the resource. And what the public policy process, I think, is largely concerned with is, of course, the long-term protection and management of this resource. So that, that is where our focus needs to be and the integration of the new information that we learn into, into that existing body of information that we have that's, that's been used to guide the process. So I appreciate that. I appreciate also your, your other comments. Of course, we don't know what's going to happen with the various things in the budgetary environment, but we need to be, I think, always, all of us involved in this sort of using that as our north star in terms of why are we doing this? What are we collecting this information for, and what is our overall goal? So I really do appreciate it, and I, I do think that there's more to come. We hope that, we hope that you'll be around to help us. But of course, I understand your comments as well, Dr. Carr. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Council Weaver. And again, thank you, Dr. Carr. Eva Smith, was there any final comments you have?
Yeah, thanks for the funding, too. It's been really cool to do a master's project that has direct implications to, like, water policy.
Thank you, and thanks for your hard work. Darren Parkin, anything you want to say before we wrap this up? Okay, I think we're ready to close this work session. Again, thanks to all of the hard work, all the great data and information that we have. Obviously, a lot to go on and a lot to look forward to as we move forward with this project. So let's go ahead and close this work session. Council, you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back. All right. Let's go ahead and get started. This is the second work session that we have for tonight, and it's on public comments and seating during COVID-19. And, you know, we're gonna have a work session and working on our city council code of conduct. And then we're gonna ask Bob Sutherland, our city attorney, to kind of give a, just a summary of the topics. We have them before us on, you know, different things that we have to deal with, with the COVID-19 and also with interruptions of council and also other items. So go ahead, Bob, and give us an introduction, then we'll start discussion with the council. Bob's still on mute, Nancy. Derek, you're unmuted. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure where you want me to start. I know this was generated by council and not staff. Seating, seating in council during COVID seems quite, quite easy topic. We have limited space in the room because of social distancing, and we require people to wear masks. I don't, I don't know that there's, I don't know where council wants to go with the seating issue, but that's where that stands. Now, public comments, I'm gonna have to take council's guidance on that. I'm not, I'm not sure where, what council wants to discuss on that, but I'm perfectly prepared to discuss anything about it.
All right. Well, let's start with that because we've had some requests by the council and those that wanted to bring up some questions or concerns or topics for us to discuss, go ahead and we'll start with that.
Sorry, are you there or do you want me to take?
Yeah, but you.
Why don't we do this? Let's start with Counsel Schuster, then we'll go to Counsel Doherty, and I'll look for hands for others that want to jump in.
Okay. I kind of read this thing over word for word, so a couple of points. We have 4.03 point, disruption of a meeting. If any man of the public will be allowed to appear and speak for the city council unless he or she disrupts and otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting. I'd like a statement added to that. That add a request by the majority of a city council, legal action by the court system to have the disruption person or group given a no trespass order to the city council only, meaning that they still could appear in court or anything else they have to do, but by a vote of council, a majority of the voted council, we can have that person taken to court and have a no trespass. We also have a 4.02/B. If it comes apparent to the council by vote, can limit, and they talk about how someone can talk at all meetings. If it comes apparent by the council by the vote, can limit public comment per individual to every other meeting. Tonight, we have no problem. But if it goes down where we have had problems, that's the same people, the same people, the same people. We have over 30,000 people in Laramie. We always had a line for people to speak. If it becomes apparent that one person or whatever is trying to get every single public comment, we need to limit them to every other meeting. And then we have in the code of conduct, appendix B. Let's see here. Public participation, the council welcomes, suggests and comments which help meet the needs of the city and improve its operation. That one's, that one's a good statement. I like that. And also welcomes questions that may clarify the responsibility of its decision. Set forth are the procedures for addressing the council. You may stand or raise your hand until recognized by the mayor or presiding officer. Please step to lectern and microphone when addressing the council. It says, next one says, identity of the speakers. All speakers must be identified. And that was appendix B, and then there's one more in C. I'm probably flying by it because I'm trying to do all this stuff. Quick, there's appendix C. I think it was just that I wanted to point it out there because guidelines for addressing the council, we'd have to revamp that one a little bit. But my biggest thing is, if we're gonna have disruption in the meeting, we need to do something about it. The other one is, is if public comment becomes overwhelmed, we need to limit. Tonight is a really bad example of that one. Almost every name we called, they did not speak. So. I'm one of the people that really moved hard to push this forward. People now can talk about any of the suggestions I've made and what they think would be better, what they don't think should be there at all. I'm open for it. But I studied our guidelines pretty good, just to see where I think things should be at. Thank you.
All right. Attorney Sutherland, do you want to make any comments about some of the thoughts that were mentioned here, especially like trespass? Is that within our purview?
That's going to be difficult. We'll start from, we'll start from ground zero. No public body has to allow public comment at all. That's never been the practice here at the city, if you wish to allow public comment. So that means you, for First Amendment purposes, you've created a limited public forum, limited in the sense that you can't, you can control sort of behavior, obscenity, personal attacks, disruption of meetings. Limited public forum because in a real, open public forum, you don't get to control the content, even the content of speech like that. If someone's on a sidewalk preaching one political or religious opinion, they can say whatever they want and they don't have to stay on topic and they don't have to follow any guidelines of behavior. So we can, in a limited public forum, certainly, for instance, last week's disruption was obviously a disruption, which council does not have to tolerate. The proper procedure, if the presiding officer, in our case, the mayor, thinks that they have disrupted council in a way that makes it not possible to conduct, conduct public business, can have them removed from the chambers. They got out, I think, before that, and when I say they, I'm talking about the disruption last week, they left before that was, you know, possible to do. So fair enough. So then the next question is, what does this mean for their future participation? Well, there's been many, many times that this has been litigated throughout the country where try to figure out what you can do to a person who are, and I'm talking about a non-violent, you know, non-obscene, but clearly disruptive action or speech at council where they, as council or a public meeting, when they get kicked out. The law is fairly clear that you can't punish people for that single disruption. What, if the disruption continues and becomes habitual, we'll move into an arena that is quite complicated, but we're not there yet. So I don't think I would advise, based on one disruption by one person or a group of people, to try to limit their speaking rights after that. The next, I think the next point that was raised by Counsel Schuster is the procedures for how people are chosen to speak. I want to be, I want to be clear on this, talking about regular council meetings. And I'll, I'll take Counsel Schuster's thoughts on this, so I don't mean to put words in your, in your mouth, counselor. Everyone gets to speak during COVID in our regular meetings. There's three things to look at. There's the 10 people who can be inside the room and seek opportunity to speak. There's the first public comment period, this is an independent issue, it's limited to a half an hour, three minutes per speaker. And then there's the last public comment period that has no limit, other than three minutes per speaker. By your rules, that comment period could theoretically go on forever. Point being that everyone right now gets a chance to comment. They might not like it that, when they're on Zoom versus they're in the room. So to sort of mix the two together, there's the issue of who do you choose to have in the room during COVID? How do you choose 10 people? That's easy to fix. It's either first come, first served, or it's a lottery. Next issue is how do you choose who's in the first half hour? How do you choose who comes at the end? That's also simple to fix. That's by a lottery. That's content neutral. You're not trying to control the, you know, the content of the speech, the position that they'll take, but you're trying to mix up the opportunity if it's somehow felt to be more, more impactful to be in the first 30 minutes, people will get a fair chance to be in those first 30 minutes and the rest of the people will have to wait till the end. So I've said a lot, and I'll, I don't know if I've covered all the points, but I'm happy to take more questions.
All right, let's go with Counsel, Counsel Doherty.
I don't need to comment.
Did he cover all the questions you had, Counsel Schuster? Okay. Others from council that want to bring up questions or thoughts regarding this? Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to support Brian. He brought up Counsel Schuster earlier about having the people that have spoken in the previous meeting maybe move to a second tier. And for instance, I know it might be difficult for the city clerk to keep track, but say if Mr. X spoke at last meeting in the first 30 minutes and Ms. Y did not, then Ms. Y would be moved up ahead of Mr. X. So that person could comment in the first 30 minutes of public comment instead of the same people all the time. If we didn't have any question about the number of people, then it wouldn't be an issue like we had tonight. But I just think to be on a fair basis with people, that they wouldn't have to be waiting around and, and they would be hopefully assured in the first 30 minutes that they would have an opportunity if they didn't have an opportunity to speak in the previous meeting. It's just a kind of a, to be a fair situation, as city attorneys talked about. Then those people that did not speak in the first 30 minutes would have an opportunity in the final public comment opportunity. So they wouldn't be denied, they would just be delayed till the end of the meeting. But on those other points, certainly up for discussion. My main concern was the fact that it seems like we have the same people dominate the first 30 minutes of public comment, and I would like to see those people who haven't had any to maybe be moved up on the list.
Counsel Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I worry that, okay, so we take this out of the context of the current situation. I mean, we're talking about long-term changes to the code of conduct that will have effects beyond this current conversation that we're having. If we imagine the fact that this week I want to talk to you about policing, and next week I want to talk to you about the fact that my garbage didn't get picked up, but I'm not allowed to talk to you about that because I spoke to you last week, to me, that doesn't feel equitable. To me, that doesn't feel like what the public comment is meant to do. I mean, I, I think if it was just because I spoke to you last week, that feels like retribution to me. And if it's, I lost the lottery and I have to speak at the end now, so I can wait, okay? That, that to me is more understandable. I think that's a more fair situation. You know, and I would hesitate to make any, I, I think, you know, we certainly do have the public comments at the end, which, as the city attorney pointed out, is unlimited, but we do have constraints on that by our code of conduct that stop us at 10 o'clock unless we decide to extend, which is, is rare. I mean, if we're honest about it, that's, that's not a common occurrence. Because our agendas have been so lengthy and we've been trying to get so much done in single meetings, we have foregone those often through this process over the last few months. And I, I think it, that, that warrants to be part of that conversation. I mean, if we have more work than we can get done while listening to the public and hearing their opinion, I think we need to meet more often or meet for longer periods of time. I mean, I, I think, you know, neither of those, we all work full-time jobs beyond this. That doesn't, that doesn't sound, you know, like the best thing in the world to me, but I think that's the job. I think limiting who gets to speak and when is, is teetering on some First Amendment territory. So I guess it's, I went to question there and I apologize, that was a bit of a statement. Sorry.
If I may, you're on.
And who's this end?
This is Bob Sutherland.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
I'm gonna bow to the city clerk on this, but I, I, I don't think that public comment on the end is limited by time.
I think you're correct.
If there's 50 people.
Code of Conduct.
Yeah. Then there's gonna be 50 public comments at the end and it will go, it can go past 10 o'clock. In other words, I believe that the code of conduct, and I do ask the city clerk to weigh in, make sure that anyone who wants to talk at a council meeting, public comment, can make that comment, no matter the hour.
We'll give our city clerk a chance to look that up. I can tell you this, as long as I've been on council, that's never been an issue. We've always had ample time and given ample opportunity for anyone to want to speak during the public comment period at the end of the meeting. So I would be much, I'd be in favor of continuing that tradition if it's, unless it's not specified in the, in the code of conduct.
Mayor, could I ask a?
Let's go to the city clerk and then we'll come back.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Counsel Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. In your code of conduct, 2.09 length of regular council meetings, it does state about the middle of the paragraph, city council shall reserve time at the end of each regular meeting for public comments regardless of the hour.
Okay, and so I think the, the way that it was explained by our city attorney then is that we'll continue until we've heard from everyone. Counsel Harrington, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I was just curious about the, maybe I'm misremembering. Yeah, Mayor, I, I was just curious about the, um, maybe I'm misremembering. How this worked out and people had already left the meeting, uh, that maybe missed the first period. Because frankly, a 10 o'clock is, is pretty late for this, but, uh. I, I must be misremembering. I, I thought we weren't introducing new, anything new, including the public comment following any agenda item that went to 10 o'clock.
My understanding is anything except public comment. That will be no matter what and no matter what time, we'll, we will take public comment. And so that's, is that correct? Okay, the city clerks indicates that that's our code of conduct and that's what we're going to be doing.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Doherty?
Uh, Appendix C, uh, Guidelines for Addressing Council Number Six. It says, large groups are encouraged to express their views to a single spokesperson rather than individually. Individuals should observe three minutes. I think when the mayor tells people to not show support. That extends the meaning, like if I were speaking on toads. And I want to say, I'm here to represent. All these people can, I get a show of hands of the people that support the Wyoming toad and they raise their hand. I feel like that's not a disruptive way. It's a, and it works on Zoom to say, I'm, I'm going to show you that I'm representing more than one person. And I think if we allow people to ask their, um, their colleagues to raise their hand. I mean, I think yelling and jeering and snapping fingers is really disruptive. But I think a, a show of hands, if the spokesperson can turn to the, the rest of the group and say. Can I, can I show, a show of hands for who supports my position?
Thank you. Let me just say this, uh, it's a point well taken. I don't know how you'd feel if the anti-toad people got up and 50 people raised their hands and the only person in the corner that's going to be pro-toad. How you would feel? So I think it's got to be, we'll, we'll look at it. You know, we, we don't want to have people intimidating other people's point of view. We want to have everyone feel very welcome and very, uh, free to speak on any topic they have without, without any censure. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and that's obviously something that we'll consider. Okay?
Yeah, I just, I think it saves people having to repeat themselves.
That's a very polite way to do it and hopefully that will work. And if it, if it does and it's not intimidating, then I'd certainly would permit that. Other hands from council? Uh, J, Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if our city clerk or, or others perhaps have considered or, or thought about how the lottery would actually work. I'm, I'm kind of curious if we, we've had that discussion internally and if we should be having it, uh, now. I mean, I understand first come, first served, right? But I, I'm curious, you know, how we think a lottery works.
Well, thank you, Counselor Pierce. I think they're waiting to hear, have direction from us. Is that something that you have thought about how to make? You know, how to take the names of those that have asked to speak and to, to, you know, to have it a random selection? So that it's more like a lottery? I remember when I was chairman of it. I was chairman of the ticket, tickets going up for basketball at a university where they had a great year. And there was more people that wanted to watch the game in the student section than we had seats. And so they had a lottery. And I remember I was not very popular with those that didn't get a seat, but they all felt like it was fair. Anyway, have you thought about how to work? Let's say you have 25 people that want to speak in the first 30 minutes and obviously there's not room for 25 people. Have you thought, or do you want to receive direction from council on how that lottery would work? And how you would be able to make it fair so everyone has a, you know, a chance to, to be in the first 10 to 12 people that speak at the beginning of the meeting? City clerk?
Mayor, I, with this being the first time we've considered lottery system. There are some softwares out there that can help do a lottery system. And I would probably have to, you know, review that and look at the cost with Janine, you know, to see.
Okay.
Well, my thought was, Mayor, if I could, that, you know, the statute in your code of conduct refer to games of chance for those sorts of things. You all get to do that, draw a card out of the deck. Something like that, it's, it's impartial, people understand it's random.
Don't spend a lot of money on software, but find something that would be random, but fair. Any, any thoughts from council on how to make a random but fair, Counselor Doherty?
I could write a Python program.
A what?
I could write a Python program. And you just list people as they come in in order. And then somebody has to give a seed number, you put it in the program.
Sorts them, okay.
Yeah, it's the basic Python.
We certainly want to find something that's fair.
And there's. You can call Eva, Eva Smith, and have her come back and help us.
They're a randomizer.
Okay.
Everywhere out there. I use it for Christmas gift selection.
Okay.
Christmas gift share with my family. So yeah, we, we can do that. I just feel like sometimes the games of chance, that tangible draw card.
Sure.
People know we didn't rig the system, you know? So anyway, but a, a randomizer would totally work as well, software.
That's a thought?
No.
Counsel, McKinney, did you want to jump in?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else on the random? C, Counselor Stalder, go ahead.
This is not about the randomizer, I just wanted to.
Well, okay, let's move on, let's move on. Counselor Stalder?
Okay. Um, I just want to talk about our decision this week, well, last week to move. The live stream on Facebook to YouTube. And then this week to lock the doors and change it, you know, just to Zoom. And I think, you, you know, we all talk about COVID all the time and it's a challenge. It's a challenge for families and businesses and governments. Obviously, it's created a challenge with the public comment. But I think we either have to, you know, be creative and expand what we do to meet people's needs. Like a restaurant, you know, that offers curbside service. Or we contract and that's what we've done this week. And if you contract, you fail. So our decisions to move it from Facebook so there's no comments and lock the doors of council chambers. I look at it, I mean, it's like a restaurant saying, we're not going to offer DoorDash. You know, we're not going to offer delivery because we had a bad experience with DoorDash one time. You know, and that's what happened last week. But based on what happened last week, we are punishing people who have followed our guidelines, you know, up until now. By locking the doors and by taking it off of Facebook. And, and I think we had that demonstration last week as a result of lack of action. And the only see, you know, the only action I see is to further limit the public comment. I mean, we're elected officials, we're here to listen to people. And so if we're hearing things that we don't want to hear, or even in a way that we don't want to hear them, we need to address that. And not, you know, to your comment in the paper, not close the blinds and lock the doors. And that's what's happened and I'm upset about it. All of these decisions that we've made with Facebook and with locking the council chambers, that was not a council decision. As far as I can tell, that was a decision from the mayor and the city manager. And I'm upset about that.
Yeah, it wasn't the city manager's decision, it was mine to get the, but anyway, I think, you know, your points are well made. We need to, this is not one where we're going to make any decisions tonight, it's a work session. But it's going to be something that we're going to put in the code of conduct. We'll have a chance to talk about all the different options that we have and then vote. Obviously, uh, last Wednesday was, was, was a very unexpected event. And, uh, I, you know, I'd never, never faced that before. And I, I asked, I asked the vice mayor, I said, what do we do differently? And I just didn't know what to do. So I wanted to move on with the meeting and, uh, obviously there's mistakes that are being made and I make plenty of them. So, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get our code of conduct so that it's clear what we do. And, and, you know, with, in public comment with the, you know, when we have a, a large number of people that want to speak, how to make it fair for everybody. But we want to, we want to kind of gather thoughts and ideas like what you're putting forward tonight and from everyone in council so that we can do that. Yes?
Well, I want to adjust the, the Facebook thing. I had no idea that there's this whole set of comments on Facebook. So people are commenting on Facebook thinking that they're talking to city council. I'm not looking at Facebook in the meeting, I'm at the meeting. And so then when I went back and saw some of the comments, people going at each other. I don't feel like we need to provide a forum for citizens to attack one another. They can do that on their own, they can make their own groups for that. If people want to make a comment to us, they can make a comment to us, they can send us an email. Our phone numbers are all published. To have just a bunch of people going at it on Facebook and thinking that, oh, well, they didn't respond to me. I mean, there isn't enough time to look at all that. So I'm really happy to not be providing a forum for a bunch of citizens to attack.
Let's, let's don't do it back and forth here. I think it's going to be, we'll have that opportunity when this becomes part of our, our ordinance, you know, on our code of conduct. But let's hear from everybody because I think we, we want to have input on how to, how to structure the, uh, you know, the code of conduct. So that we can have a, uh, a, a city council meeting that not only conducts the business, but also is fair to the public. Anyone else wants to make thoughts or comments or guidance? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to weigh in on this issue of the Facebook video stream. Probably having the video stream available through that platform is a good idea. I think that Counselor Doherty's points about the commenting on the video stream are valid. I don't know that we need to provide that forum. Let me illustrate, uh, one example of why. When we have people gathered in the chambers under normal circumstances, or even with 10 people in the chambers. We don't allow them to antagonize each other. Now, last week, you could make an argument that we did allow that to happen. And, um, it would be difficult to say that, uh, that we didn't. Of course, that was unexpected. Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate your comments about this being somewhat uncharted territory and not necessarily having a good roadmap of what we should or shouldn't do. But I do, I do very much agree that the council doesn't need to provide a forum for people to engage in. If you go back and look at any of that, um, less than constructive civic dialogue, there's nothing civic about it. It, it is very much a, a toxic environment where people can say whatever they want without fear of, um, even ever having to encounter the other person. So although I think we should probably have the, uh, channel available, I don't know that the commentary needs to be allowed. Those folks very rarely, if at all, address questions to the council through that format. And they have many, many other avenues through which they can do that. The Zoom call, email, um, letters to the editor, posts to the page. I don't know that we need to have that running commenter, uh, continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Weaver. Counselor Harrington?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to Counselor Weaver's point, I, I think it might be, uh, not possible to remove simply the comments while still streaming on Facebook. Um, I think that that is a feature of YouTube and, and potentially not live streaming on Facebook for what it's worth.
All right, we'll have that discussion again as this becomes an ordinance. But this is just to gather thoughts and things for us to kind of structure what we're going to put into our code of conduct. Anything else on this? Counselor Doherty?
I also want to point out that the doors have been locked since March.
Right.
So it made it sound like in the paper that now we're locking the doors. No, the doors have been locked. And I have to say that if the other counselors knew that we had this place to ourselves, they could all be here. And we could be having a discussion in a place where we don't have to worry about it getting filled with droplets. From, um, a bunch of other people who could watch on Zoom. So, so I, I kind of like this rather than certain people get chosen to come in if people can come in on Zoom. And the, and the loudest complainers, I've seen them on Zoom many weeks. So I think, I mean, the complainers about losing that venue, I think they're figuring out the Zoom part. So I don't, I, I think it's kind of nice to not be exposing our staff to people coming in all night. I think it's reasonable in a pandemic to, to keep the doors locked. But we have transparency through the airwaves. Thank you.
Okay. Other, other thoughts, uh, as we put together something that we can actually vote on at a future date? Counselor Harrington, go ahead.
Two things, Mayor, uh, and thank you.
Did you have your hand up also?
Counselor Pierce did and that, she is welcome to speak in front of me for sure.
Counselor Pierce, I, I don't think we've heard from you before. Well, let's start with you, Counselor Pierce, then we'll go to Counselor Harrington.
So, uh, point number one, I really do like the idea of, of a lottery for, um, for public comments. Number two, I think I would like also the opportunity to maybe expand the dais or rotate counselors. I think, I talked about this before, but I think. Obviously, we're too close for all nine of us to be on the dais at the same time. We don't have, you know, so, so if there's a, a plan we could come up with to either. Rotate counselors or potentially expand or stick a few of us out in the. You know, on the, you know, in the, the audience area. I think that's something we need to, we need to consider. So, um, just my thoughts on that as well. And we, and, you know, we don't have to, we don't all have to be there, but the opportunity to be there might be nice. Or we could have, you know, one council meeting, it's word one night. The next council meeting, it's word two night. And I don't know, I mean, I just feel like we need to do some rotating ourselves. So, um, just, just to have, just to be able to state that publicly, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Counselor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll try to be brief. Uh, my, my first point would just be that council is making a, uh, a, as members, we make a decision. We have a, an opportunity to, to zoom into this call. Staff doesn't have that and I, I think because we have other options, we should be exploring those. I mean, I know we got kind of in, the pandemic surprised everyone, of course, and we sort of found ourselves here. Uh, now sort of playing catch up to what this looks like and how we function in our meetings during COVID. So I, I think this is a timely conversation about, you know, how we do this in a way to protect our staff members that, that have to be there in person. You know, we all get to choose, but certainly the city clerk doesn't get to decide whether she's at the meeting or not. So I, you know, I don't mind Counselor Doherty's, uh. Thought about, uh, you know, limiting the inside space so that we're not subjecting them to, to potential exposure. I will say I'm not particularly interested in returning to council chambers until everyone on council is properly wearing a mask. Just my own personal feeling, um, so for what it's worth.
Other comments from counselors? All right, this, this is a topic I think we need to hear from the public on. Uh, city clerk, do you have anyone on the call that wants to make a public comment?
We have, um, Tom Matamore.
I, I shouldn't say public, it's a comment from the public. Tom Matamore, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I'm going to take a completely different tact than what I originally was going to address the council about. I am truly disappointed in the vast amount of willful ignorance that has been displayed here in the last 15 minutes. The issue is not COVID and the issue is not a lottery. The issue is you have a code of conduct and you did not enforce it. You are not discussing enforcing that code of conduct. What I want to know is if you don't intend to enforce the code of conduct, why don't you repeal it? Because the way you stand right now, what is to prevent me from bringing 25 rodeo clowns to the next, uh, city council meeting? And putting on a demonstration where we yell at you for five minutes and go home as soon as the cops show up? Excuse me, I've got a cough. And the week after that, I could bring in a bunch of Russian jugglers throwing plates in the air. I mean, you, you have a code of conduct you enforce or you don't. So I think you're willfully ignorant of the real problem at hand. So I would really appreciate somebody addressing Councilman Schuster's or Councilman Stalder's concerns with the real code of conduct. And I have not heard a word on that since it started, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else in the public?
Brett Glass?
Mr. Glass, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First of all, I, I want to commend council on its patience and having not just one but two public comment periods for meeting. The U.S. and Wyoming constitutions grant all citizens the right to free speech and petition, and it's council's responsibility not just to tolerate public comment, but to devote those 30 minutes at least to listening to it. I thought that Dave Polikas, one of our recent mayors, was disrespectful toward the public and its civil rights, and I'm glad they see a positive change in policy since that time. Now, as the Supreme Court has ruled, government doesn't have the power to squelch speech, but it does have the power to control its time, place, and manner. So limits on the amount of time that speakers are given and the total time of the public comment period are perfectly reasonable and constitutional. Now, last week's protest was a bit loud, but protesters are allowed to be loud. And to their credit, the participants did at least stick to the three-minute limit, even as a group. However, they didn't observe the social distancing requirements and occupancy requirements which council has imposed during the COVID-19 pandemic, and so they were out of order. Perhaps it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a doorman or a sergeant-at-arms to ensure that those entering the chambers are masked and socially distanced, not too numerous for safety. And perhaps there should be an online sign-up system which rotates so that it's fair. But please don't eliminate opportunities to comment as a reaction to one group's misbehavior. And please consider broadcasting through Amazon's Twitch service, which is much better than YouTube or Facebook, and lets you disable the chat if you want to. Now, as you know, I'm a candidate to become a member of your body, and while I'm an underdog due to not having served on council before, I hope to raise awareness of my views and my aptitudes between now and the election. And should I be elected, I expect to devote the time at each meeting and at least one full day between meetings to listening to the public. I'm not going to burn out, I'm not going to stop listening, and I won't stop caring, and I urge you to do likewise. So keep order, but don't use these protests or the pandemic to cut off input from the public. If you do, it will intensify bureaucracy and move farther from democracy. City government needs to be transparent, open, and responsive, and I hope to join you in ensuring that it remains that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Christopher Stratton?
Christopher, go ahead.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. In addressing this, definitely a lot of what Brett said, I completely agree with. We need to have transparency, we need to have the voice of the community be heard and be active within council. So limiting that is not something that should be done. I, I commend you guys on working with the Zoom aspects, and Facebook can be a little bit on the inappropriate side whenever it comes to the comments that are left in the threads. But it is one of the most easiest and accessible to anyone, and you guys just need to work on the best way of making accessibility to, to counsel your priorities and goals. Remember, we may not say what you like, but we do represent who put you into office. Maybe if, if you guys do want to do closed, closed ends, if you could offer systems that are signed on to Zoom and in a public space that somebody could make comments from, that keeps you away from the public and keeps you guys safer, that might be a good option as well. Thank you, and that's all I have to say today.
Thank you, Christopher.
Nancy Sendalar?
Nancy, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my concern is, although I do all right on Zoom, not everyone has access to Zoom or watching on computers, and I think you need to make space in the chambers for those people that do need to attend in person because they are unable to attend by computer. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Maximus, sorry?
Okay, Maximus, is this the first time he's commented on this topic?
On this topic.
Okay, go ahead, Maximus.
Thank you. About two months ago, I spoke to you for the first time after two years, and I said some stuff that's actually proving to be prophetic. And I spoke about the fact that I felt compelled to speak up, and I believe that many more would do in the future because you got yourself and everyone else in the community into a situation. And I asked you to understand that the absolute center of gravity of governance in this community is you, the council, and that the community looks for you for leadership, good governance, transparency, stability of city operations, and yes, to even ensure there's civility in public discourse. And back then, I said, as of late, you have failed spectacularly in all those categories, and I believe that. I also went and said that I have seen this stuff happen before. I worked well over a decade for the U.S. government doing stability of operations in failed states. And I explained to you that when the population has lost confidence in the legitimacy of their government, this is the kind of stuff that you see. And I would invite you to get closer to the real owners of government. I heard some suggestions saying, let's close the doors to the public completely because that would somehow make it nicer for council members and the city staff to operate in the chamber. And I would like to remind you that this is the first time that you actually have closed the door before you allowed 10 people, and now you have closed it completely. That may make it nicer for you guys to operate, but it doesn't make it nicer for the public, and that should be your real concern. And whatever measures you guys take, if you further yourself from the government, you only lose legitimacy and confidence in your ability to represent them, and you will hear more and more from them. By limiting their access to the chambers, like some speaker-public commenters stated, some people simply don't have the technology. Some folks are older, and they don't understand how to work the Zoom, and they would like to talk to their government in person. So whatever decision you make, keep that in mind, please, that what you're seeing here, it's a bunch of people speaking at the council, is not a vote of confidence, is anything but. And whatever you do to prevent that from happening is only going to exacerbate the situation that I warned you about two months ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Maximus.
Caleb Hine?
Caleb, go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Hey, so, um, I, I really, um, I was surprised, just like everybody else, and unfortunately was not there during the meeting. But what I did see last week is exactly what this is about. And that, I guess, the way I think, feel is, I go, use a lot of analogies, but a lighter can be used a lot of different ways. You can use a lighter to, to warm your fire. You can use a lighter to provide hot dogs and s'mores to the family. This is what freedom of speech is like. We have, we have the ability to use this, but freedom of speech is great. And we can't, we can't be, it's really good when the community is talking and commenting on this. And I think that what you're seeing, the uptick of people commenting, is exactly, exactly what you want to see. You want to see your community involved in this type of thing. So cutting off the community from this is really, uh, is disappointing because you want to get that comment. And the people who are disrupting, I feel as those people should, and, and out of civil disobedience, as they stated, are, they're, they've already disobeyed the rules. And what is missing here is not necessarily come up with these new rules and maybe they'll follow them. No, we need to have, we have, we need to have some more follow-through and some more accountability for your actions. And so I, I liked what Schuster said. I think exactly what he was saying, there needs to be something else. And I, I just can't, maybe I can't believe that there is no legal action that can be taken towards these people. I, I think that's, you have to uphold your rules that you put together because you could make anything student code of con, or not student, code of conduct for this meeting and just not even uphold them, and, and you're going to have the clowns. And, not referring to one or the other, I meant referring to the person who talked before. You could just bring clowns on and disrupt the meeting. So I like the plans to move comment section to the end. If you can't, can't make it during the first, I also like the randomization. My worry is for the elderly. When we switch and close doors, that lady that was there last week, she was there for a purpose. It was because she couldn't figure out Zoom, okay? And so limiting those people isn't a good idea. And again, I, I, just for full disclosure, I am running for city council, word one.
Thank you, Mr. Hine.
That's all the raised hands I can see, Mayor.
Okay.
Nancy, sorry, um, could I give a public comment?
Yes, go ahead, Billy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is Billy Harris. I'm a taxpaying resident of this city. Last Wednesday's sit-in was an expression of our disappointment in your inaction as our elected officials and as the city manager. We have met with you in the proper channels and given you ideas and concerns to work on, but again and again, you undermine us in your passing of responsibility and interpersonal communications, and even sometimes refusal to meet with us. And after three months of protests, you decided to bring forward a work session to discuss limiting concerns able to be brought to your council, even before the mention of biased incident reporting and annual police reports. Some of you are actively trying to suppress voices of concern in the community rather than addressing the concerns that they are bringing. Counselor Schuster's presentation of this idea is absolutely in conflict with his concern of First Amendment rights. Brian, in what world does limiting your constituent speaking rights uphold the First?
You're allowed to attack me.
Okay, you, uh, again, the rules of the, that we have when you speak is you cannot make personal attacks. Uh, you can, you can, uh...
I was just, yeah, I was just asking.
Okay, well, this is...
I was, I was just saying that the presentat, the present-
Go ahead with your comments.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's conflicting in his, uh, upholding of First Amendment rights. That's all I was saying. But in general, council, your refusal to pass even the possi, possibility of a face-covering ordinance is what put your city at risk. You clearly don't appreciate our rights while you are, while your inactions in regards to COVID-19 continues, and while your current work session is discussing how to limit input from your public. My priorities do not lie in disrupting your meetings. My priorities lie in bringing forward concerns from the public in the assumption that you will address and earnestly work on them. Uh, if your collective priorities are to lock the doors and shut the blinds to the rest of your city, maybe you aren't fit for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Mayor, I'm not sure if there are any others. I don't see any hands raised.
All right, we'll go now back to the council for final thoughts on this before we close our work session. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose, I think, of our work session was try, was to try to consider some ideas for how we'd like to manage public comment for meetings in the future and entertain some changes to the code of conduct. Counselor Schuster put forward some ideas. A few other people have expressed some concerns that they've had, but we haven't really, we haven't really considered any other ideas other than Counselor Schuster's, and then the possible suggestion that we close the chamber, which is problematic. I understand where the idea comes from, but it's problematic, as are some of Counselor Schuster's recommendations. But I want to bring up something that I think we haven't really talked about during this discussion, which is that we had a group disruption of our meetings, but we have certainly, I know I have, and Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I believe you have, and Counselor Schuster, I believe you have as well, simply because you've been here for some time. We have seen a whole range of unacceptable behavior that's violated the code of conduct over the years from individuals usually that, um, you could argue exceeds the, uh, nature of interrupting the meeting. Uh, we're talking about people bringing in garbage. We're talking about people using vanity endlessly. We're talking about personal attacks to members of the council and staff, and it has never garnered the amount of discussion that this has. And I think we need to consider that and have some of that perspective as we talk about which direction we want to go. I'm not certain that long-term changes to the code of conduct, and maybe those aren't being proposed. I don't want to put words or attribute thoughts to anybody that they're not trying to indicate. I'm not sure long-term changes to the code of conduct are really what our goal should necessarily be, and there's a lot of reasons for that. The other thing I think we all have to understand is that regardless of what proposals we go with, they will be interpreted negatively by someone. We heard a comment about erosion and, and trust of the government, local government. Of course, this is something that's been going on for a long time and, and goes well outside of our local government concerns. But no matter what we do, someone will, or groups of people will feel that they are being singled out regardless of the option that we choose, and that will contribute towards a feeling of not being represented. We need to consider that reality as well. The, the choices are not good no matter what direction we go. And the perspective needs to be maintained that we have seen a variety of these behaviors over the years. And frankly, we have done a poor job of enforcing that code of conduct in a number of circumstances, not just last Wednesday. And when we do enforce the code of conduct, we are often accused of being hostile to the public when we do choose to enforce that code of conduct. All of these things need to be taken under consideration as we decide how we want to manage this in the future. I know that isn't a solution. It's simply my perspective on what the realities of this situation are. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I recall that Counselor Schuster brought this up before last Wednesday's meeting, and his concern was having the same people speak during that first 30 minutes of public comment. So I would just like to reinforce that idea that I would still like to see those individuals who have not had an opportunity to speak in the past be moved somehow towards the front of the list. All this other discussion, I think, is valid, but I think we go back to the original point that Counselor Schuster brought up before last Wednesday's disruption, and that is the fact that we need, in my mind, to have a fair representation of how we handle public comment. And having those people not be able to speak until the end of the meeting, I think, is unfair when they are being bumped by other people who have seemingly spoken on a consistent basis at our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, final thoughts? Counselor Doherty?
Even though I raised the thing about it being safer, I, you really do have to let people in the door. I agree that you need a sergeant-at-arms, but since, since policing is the thing that made people, brought us to this, a lot of the discord, I just don't like putting the policeman at, in that position of having to guard our door, to just let a certain number of people in at a time as the original plan. So I'm, I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Weaver?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak one more time. And I want to say that I, I agree with Vice Mayor Gabriel. I think we do need to, before we end this meeting, endorse some sort of proposal to consider at the next meeting or very soon addressing how we want to handle comment. The only, the only proposal I've heard that seems to be fair is the idea of- is the idea of some sort of randomization, some sort of lottery system for people to be able to, uh, determine their opportunity to speak. Um, it's the only, uh, unbiased system that everybody be able to, uh, participate in, um, equally. Um, although I understand there are arguments in favor of a, uh, of a rotating system. Um, I think the, the lottery seems to be the, the fairest, but, um, I would say that I would support something of that nature for a, a temporary period while we're enduring the COVID-19. Thank you.
All right. The time, as you can all see, is nine thirty, uh, I think. Counselor Stalder.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, it is nine thirty, and I know we all want to go home. I was just reading an email from the city manager that she sees seat counsel and where it said, "This is my decision, um, along with the clerk and the city attorney, to move public comment to the video feed." So I know we're not taking a vote tonight, but what are we doing at the next meeting as far as letting people in?
City manager.
Mayor, uh, one thing I wanted to point out is, um, it seems not to be clear to council that we had somebody at the door last week. But when 40 people stream in, what is that person, whether it be the assistant city manager, as it was last week, and also happened to be standing there with our environmental health specialist, what is that person to do when rushed by 30 or 40 people? Whether it's Todd or a sergeant-at-arms? And if it is a law enforcement agent of the city, then I think the council need to consult with their attorney to determine if you are willing to press charges. Because acting in that law enforcement capacity is very different than being a security guard. So these are issues that we need to work through. To Counselor Stalder's question, the reason I made the decision to close the doors tonight and go back to what we were doing in the spring was to allow you all time to have this conversation because we need direction from you. And in the absence of that direction, I have a duty to make decisions that protect the staff that work for me, to ensure your safety. And so the city attorney, myself, and the clerk all met and determined tonight, we needed to give you the space to make a decision about how you want to handle groups of people coming in to a room with limited seating capacity of 10 persons under current public state health orders. How do you want me to manage that? I'll do it however you want, and I didn't choose to make a decision for you. I made a decision, along with Bob and Nancy, to give you time and space to make a decision because we didn't have that direction, so.
All right. And obviously, tonight, we don't make those decisions, but we are having the conversation, so appreciate that. Anything else, Counselor Stalder, before, uh, now, ma'am, city clerk? Is our council guidelines that this meeting ends at nine thirty? Because we can't make motions, we just keep on going, don't we?
That, you, you're correct, honor. We don't take action on a work session evening. Um, your code of conduct in the length of regular city council meetings just addresses regular city council meetings.
But not a work session.
It do, yeah, it doesn't.
All right. Well, we can, we can move forward then.
If you're right.
City manager.
If the city attorney agrees, I mean, my intention was to take direction tonight. You don't have to take a vote on that unless you feel like you're, you know, i-if it's unclear enough that there's a majority, but-
I hit the wrong button, and I'd like to speak when you want me to.
City attorney.
Yeah. I fully participated, as Janine said, in this decision, uh, only for this meeting, Counselor Stalder. Um, to, to give, let council give us some guidance on how moving forward. The simplest thing is we, and, and, these are my ideas. So I perhaps out of my lane. The simplest thing, uh, and I think we have to do this, is we continue with the 10 people, um, in, 10 public people in council chambers. That's all that we have the space for. The next question becomes then, how do we, for lack of a better term, mix up the order of public comment? Because everybody's going to get a chance to comment. Um, and I, and I, and if the guidance is, um, a lottery kind of system, I think that, that staff and I can work on that over the next week. Then the third question that I think that we need some guidance on is what Janine touched upon, and a couple of counselors did, which is enforcement of, A, the 10 people in chambers, um, and B, and I hope this never happens, disruptions in chambers. Because what happened last week is we had a civilian staff member, the assistant city manager, who could not and should not be in the position of trying to prevent 40 or 50 people from streaming in the door. Now, that may be just an issue that we're okay with, um, relying on people's goodness, but that's the third point. Do we want somebody else around, uh, with the ability, more of an ability, to A, prevent people coming in the building other than the 10, uh, and B, available to deal with disturbances? And I will put a finer point on what the, uh, city manager said. Uh, dealing with the disturbance does not have to be an arrest. It just has to be, you, it's up to the mayor to say, "You now need to leave the chambers." And somebody has to be available to make sure that person leaves the chambers. So that's my view of this. That's why I thought that we really had, I thought, I couldn't give any different advice for this meeting. Uh, I was fully in line with the city manager on this. We needed to give you guys breathing room to give us guidance on those issues. We could go back to, we won't change anything for next meeting. I mean, it'll be just like a week ago. Uh, so it's guidance, it's not a vote, but, but we need some sense. And that's how I analyze the issues. And for me, by the way, um, folks getting by the fellow at the door, um, for, for me, I less worry about COVID, though that's certainly a worry. I worry about the physical safety of our staff and council. And, uh, I, I'm, I worry also that a tinder can be sparked between members of the public. Um, that's what worried me, and that's why I thought it was important to take this one week pause. I'm sorry, that's a long speech, um, but that's, that's why I was fully on board with the city manager, and that's where I think we are.
All right. Thank you, city attorney. I'm going to start with, uh, what I think is maybe some direction for staff. I like the idea of a lottery. I like the idea of staying with 10, 10 in the room. And, uh, if it, if it's, um, if there is disruption, I'll, I will take a recess and, uh, make sure that we get back to where we have a safe environment. And, uh, if the disruption continues, we also have an option of going elsewhere and doing the city business. We'll continue to, you know, receive public comment through Zoom in another place, but we will, uh, we will continue to offer the option for everyone to come civilly into the council chambers, and that's my opinion. That's my direction. Come, you know, make sure that we have the social distancing, wearing a mask in the council chambers, listening to the public, following the council guidelines that we have, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully, we can, uh, deal with, uh, disruptions in a way which, you know, will be rare. And if it is rare, we'll just find a safe place to go do the business, continue to receive, um, do our business with Zooming so it's open, it's transparent, everybody can see it, but we'll still give that option to the public. And that's my, my direction on this. Now, I'm sure the council's going to jump in on this. Who, who wants, Counselor Doherty, give everyone a chance to speak.
My issue on Wednesday was that our staff was trapped. We could leave. I started to leave, and I thought, "What's the point?" I'm leaving staff and the public trapped in a super-spreader event where people are shouting. So even with a mask, it's not going to contain droplets. So we exposed a bunch of people, and we could leave, but where do our staff? Would you climb up, you know, like? That was my issue. And I, I'm really disappointed that, uh, we have to have this discussion, but I don't want to expose our staff. Like, we could return to another spot, but we need to be able to protect our staff. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster.
Lottery draw. I support what you said. Cut it off at a time, three o'clock for the meeting. Do the lottery draw, inform the people that can show up.
Counselor Pierce, then Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and maybe Counselor Schuster just alluded to this. I'm curious how the 10 people who sit in council chambers are picked. Is that a lottery, or is that a first come, first served basis?
Do you want to make a suggestion?
I said lottery draw.
I like the lottery idea, but I, I don't, I don't actually know what we've been doing in that regard.
For, for the council, first come, first served? So, okay, Counselor Pierce, on this, would you want to, as far as the council chambers? I, I think, one, two, three, four, five. Five, with, we have tables here also where we could accommodate the entire council in the council chambers. Uh, the, the first-
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not talking about that right now. My question was, how do we determine the 10 members that, of the community that sit in council chambers?
Again, that's random.
How is that?
Just, so, you know, have a, there's, there's, they said there's different ways in which it can be randomized and get those numbers, and then those, those will be the ones that will be ordered according to a random, fair way to do that. Now, I, I don't know what method to use. I would, I like the idea of having a, the one that the city manager mentioned, but it's just something that we're, it, there's confidence in the public that it's being done fairly.
Is she asking what we're gonna do or what we've been doing?
Well, recommendations for the council.
My question was, what have we been doing?
Oh, in the past.
For the 10 people from the community that get to sit in council chambers during the meeting.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you my answer, then if I can be corrected. It's been first come, first served. First ones that come in, they'll be the first 10 seated. And then we, as they leave, they're replaced by people that are waiting to come in. Counselor Schuster.
The way it was right now is they could reserve a seat one week in advance, plus one day. So at 12:01 this morning, Tuesday, people could start emailing to reserve a seat for the next Tuesday meeting. Yeah. So it wasn't first come, up to the door, first served.
Right.
It was first email.
Notification.
First request.
First request, right. Okay.
Okay, so I-
Do you have direction for us as far as how to do the, uh, selection for the 10 that sit in council chambers?
I think Jane wants to speak again.
She is. Counselor Pierce, you're up.
Thank you. So is, is, is there a good way to randomize that as well? Or, or do we feel, I mean, I've not been there, so it's hard to know if, if we think it's been working, but could we randomize those 10 folks that get to sit in chambers as well?
Counselor, uh, city clerk.
Mayor, in my best estimation, in order to allow the public to know whether or not they have a seat, we would have to create some kind of deadline that they have to contact us by so that we could input the names into the system to be able to randomize and notify them before the meeting that they've been selected to then participate in chambers that evening.
On average, we've been able to accommodate about 13 individuals. So the first, those, those people that would be notified would be the 13 people, and I think we could accommodate 13.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, so deadline, when they would notify you, and then we would randomize that, and then they would be welcome to come into council chambers.
Yes.
City manager.
Or they could show up here, line up, and we let everybody choose a card or whatever, and then they go based on that game of chance, something like that. So if we could set a deadline, or we could perform it right before the meeting.
I think in order to keep people from having to come down here and then go home, I like the idea of having a, you know, a notification. I don't know, city clerk, are you thinking about several hours before the council meeting starts so that they're notified that they're going to be able to either be in person or Zoom? I, I don't know. How, how, how are you looking at that?
Mayor, if we would do with the will of the council, so whatever you desire. But, you know, as someone that works full-time, you know, I would want to have a general idea if I was going to city hall to participate in the meeting or if I was going home to save myself that time in between. So I would, I, I would think an hour or two notification might be sufficient, but I, you know, we'll do whatever the council determines.
I'd recommend at three o'clock.
Three o'clock the previous, uh, of Tuesday.
Of that Tuesday of the meeting.
Sound fair to everybody? Let's, let's go. Counselor, uh, Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just was hoping that the city clerk could state very clearly what the protocol is at the moment, because regardless of what the will of the council is for the future, uh, if that's an ordinance change, it's going to take us seven weeks from tonight to have that in place, um, after three readings. So, uh, you know, the things we're talking about are, are two months out. Um, so the public should know. I think, um, those listening maybe are the most concerned. Um, how, how can they most easily get on the, the first come, first served list right now?
Yeah, this temporary, temporary way of doing it until it's, it's codified.
Mayor, council, you are not contemplating an ordinance change, nor, in my opinion, even a change to your code of conduct. What we're seeking is temporary direction on how to conduct your proceedings, how to administer them at the staff level while COVID is in place. So we can take direction, and we can implement this immediately tomorrow.
Okay.
With, then, Mayor, I would just add that I, I'm fine with the lottery system. That seems like the most equitable way. Um, and I do think notification ahead of time is important.
Go ahead.
My two cents.
Any other comments? Then we're going to hear from the city clerk again.
I know, but we're not amending the code of conduct. That's my opinion. Bob can disagree.
Bob, Nancy and I are discussing, oh, sorry, Mayor, that we're not amending the code of conduct. We're just putting in place some temporary administrative procedures to get us through COVID. That's it. And they could change based on public health orders. Maybe we can have 20 people next week. I don't know.
Mr. Southard, uh, city clerk and the city manager are asking a question. Is this, uh, random selection of people to be in council chambers a code of conduct issue or is it something that we can just have a trial and see where it goes?
No, it, it's just an administrative matter that we needed some guidance on.
Okay, so it doesn't have to, okay. All right. That's, to me, that's where we are. Is that okay with you, city clerk? Where city, city attorney says it's just an administrative decision that we, we deal with? I think let's go with that until we, until it become otherwise. Yes, vice, vice mayor.
Just, just a clarification. Could we, I'm still not quite sure. Is this a three o'clock deal on a lottery system or?
Let, let's, what, what works for you?
Yeah, could we get that clear, please?
What works for you? What time works for you?
Mayor, I will make anything work. So, to the best of my ability.
I like about it.
Let, let's, let's work with three o'clock.
Okay.
And, and then that way you'll notify, at least you'll have a certain number of people that's ordered, and then we'll see what happens after that. Okay.
So Mayor, if I could just clarify, um, just for us going forward. So for next week's meeting, public comment will be taken on a lottery system.
Correct.
As well as the 10 seats in chambers will be on a lottery system that closes at three o'clock on Tuesday to allow staff time to notify those participants.
All right. Now, now, the other question that, that was asked is how are we going to accommodate the city council members as far as being present in the city council chambers? Is that going to be lottery also? Counselor?
I, I'm happy to trade with Counselor Pierce or sit in the audience.
And again, I, I will mention this, there is room for everyone in the city council to be in council chambers if you wish to. Or if you want to be at the dais, then you're, we'll, we'll trade. We'll do whatever we need to do to make it work. And I, I'd be glad to sit down there and have the vice mayor run the meeting. I'll be glad to do that. City clerk.
Mayor, if the council members, um, could just notify me, um, ahead of time, if you don't normally attend, but you would like to, we will certainly set up accommodations so we can make sure we have enough speakers and-
You have complete option of being on Zoom or in council- You have complete option of being on Zoom or in council chambers. We'll make sure that we have social distancing and that it will work for everyone in the council. Okay? Other issues? Counselor Stalber?
I'll be really quick. Thank you, Nancy, for all that you do. You're amazing. Every meeting, like managing the Zoom and everything, it's a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ditto. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we've got some other things we need to do before we wrap this meeting up, so let's, let's move on. I think we've covered enough of this work session, so we'll close the work session and move on now to the council updates. Let me just do this. We'll start with the ones, we'll go with Counselor Weaver, then Harrington, then Pierce. Counselor Weaver, update?
I have no updates.
Counselor Harrington?
No updates, Mayor.
Counselor Pierce?
I'm good. Thanks, Mayor.
Schuster?
Um.
Counselor Schuster?
Bynan Commission met last night, and the Albany County School District put their presentation to start on Slade. The building is very, very attractive. It will be where the old high school was. If you get a chance and can go online to see it, I recommend you do it. It's three wings out, plus the old gym. I shouldn't call it an old gym. It's a fairly new gym. It's a nice gym. So that term was probably very incorrect, and I have a council comment later, but that's gonna be my only update.
Thank you. Counselor Doherty?
I have none.
I have none.
None.
At the airport board meeting on Friday, and we got to do a walkthrough of the new terminal. It looks great. And in light of our discussion about COVID, it's nice that we'll have a much bigger terminal.
Sure, me too. Okay, council comments? Council comments? Do you have any? I have none. Counselor comments?
I just had a comment about the public comment period. We're listening respectfully to the thirty minutes before and however many minutes afterwards. I, I finally, I think there's a disconnect that the public thinks we're not listening because we're just being quiet, listening, and not interaction, interacting. And I wanna assure the public that we are listening. In fact, I take notes. Some of the things that have been said, I can pretty much figure out what that person's gonna say because I've heard that before. So I would like public comment to be more directed to things the public wants us to know about rather than satire or, or, or filibustering. So I feel like there might be time for more voices if, if people would be respectful to let other voices into the discussion. Thank you.
Counselor Schuster?
Um, I, I would like that we would do a very good announcement to the hockey club. I've received a tremendous amount of emails and personal phone calls, and I realize not everybody's happy with masks, but I wonder if there's anything else we can do for the hockey club because there's a, a lot of parents that are upset. And I'm just hoping we can announce something to them to move things forward friendly. Because I've had a lot of upset parents on the hockey club here local. Thank you.
Mayor, on that point?
Okay, back to you on council comments.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to pass along that it, it seems to me that Dr. Elias is holding things up with the hockey club on their request to get things started, that she is reviewing their request along with other organizations, and the hockey club people are upset that she's not moving along quicker because high school football, for instance, is ready to go and other things on campus and so on. And so that would be my request too, and maybe if we could talk to Dr. Elias to see if she could move that decision along a little bit quicker because of this impending timeframe of hockey getting started. And some people have even talked about going over to Cheyenne because a decision will not be made in time. And so we would, you know, lose that hockey time rental at the ice center, which will be a good idea.
Very specifically, losing the funds.
So that, that would be my only request is if we could get Dr. Elias. But I mean, she's probably got legitimate questions, and so maybe that's not why she's moving quicker. I, I would, I would concur with Counselor Schuster on that to see if we could get some resolution to the situation for the hockey people. Thank you.
Counselor Pierce?
Thank you. If someone correct me, but Dr. Elias is appointed by the county commissioners? Yes or no?
Is she appointed by the state or by the, I think she's appointed by the state. County health official.
County health officer, yeah. County commission, yeah.
Mayor, I thought it was the county commission.
Is it? Okay.
We could verify tomorrow.
All right. Okay, any comments? Do you have Counselor Pierce?
Uh, no, I, I'm good. Thanks.
Counselor Harrington? Counselor Weaver? Okay, let's go, the, 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 uh, the agenda should not take long. Let me go through that with you, and then we'll go to, to the public comments. On the agenda which you have before you, as we go down through the first part of it, I think what you will find is that until we get down into the, well, on the, let me, let me just say this. On the nine D is the final reading of the special events, and that's been moved to the consent agenda. It's any, I don't think we had much comment last time, and that's why it's there. Uh, let's go into the regular agenda. The first two are third readings, so we're familiar with that. The next one is the recommendation for, for a resolution to contribute eighty-six thousand dollars to Interfaith for their, for relief, and this money will be earmarked for utilities and, and their, you know, things such as that. It will not go to, to pay for staff salaries. They obviously have a lot of pressure on them. And then the open container, which we passed, I think we had a certain date. This is to move it to the end of September on number fourteen. Okay, now, any questions about anything on the regular consent agenda or anything on the agenda?
Mayor, is the, is item thirteen, is that just the program that would, we are cooperating with Interfaith to help people with utility bills? Is that what I'm understanding?
This, this is money that has been collected by the city from collection of rents through Basic Beginnings. And the council indicated that we had options for that. This is one of the options that we have to consider to make a decision on, on Tuesday, whether or not this money would go to Interfaith for the purpose of giving them relief. And so that's, that will be our discussion, but that's, that's why it's on the agenda because that's something, the council has a decision on that money that's been collected for the land that we have leased to Basic Beginnings.
Sure, and so it is just for a fund to assist residents of Laramie with utility bills, though? That's my question.
Right, utilities, any, any, uh?
Ma- Mayor?
Yes, that's what I understand.
Mayor, this, this is, uh, Mayor, this is for, right now, it's open to, uh, we, I've written it so it could be open for any need because Interfaith said, you know, maybe they paid the utility bill, but they might need to pay the power bill. However, I think a council decision on Tuesday is what we, I would like to have so we could have, if you just wanted to have utilities, we'd be happy to do that. And we're gonna have a memorandum, if you're, if this passes, we would then do a memorandum of, of understanding with Interfaith.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that was, Malia just answered my question. That was my concern as well.
You'll make the decision on what the limits are, but that's, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Or if we, if we offer that. Okay, anything else? Any questions on the agenda? Okay, let's go back to public comments again. So again, anyone that wants to make public comments, we're gonna open public comments. You have three minutes, and we'll go until everyone's been heard.
Tyler Clatt?
Tyler, go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Oh, yeah, he's, unmute him, I think we.
Something happened. We got one word of him that went mute.
Okay, try it one more time. He's still got his, the red, try star six. He was, we heard him and then, okay, here we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
I'm sorry about that. That was my bad. Uh, so I was just reminding everyone in the Zoom what our recycling services are. We can only recycle one, ones and twos plastics. Other than that, you can recycle most papers as long as they don't have food waste on them, and cardboard. But stuff like wax paper, vinyl siding, and glass can't be recycled. Uh, my big issue is glass. We lost our glass recycling a few years ago. Um, and right now, I'm trying to brainstorm some ways of how to recycle glass in town. So if any counselor member has an idea to get consistent glass recycling in town, or anyone on the Zoom, please let me know. Uh, beyond that, I would just like to say that this city council has been a true modern comedy. You guys have been arguing about the way that constituents have been coming to you after they followed the rules. They've literally emailed you as you pass. They've gotten a seat and came and given only their three public, three-minute testimonies. If you guys would just spend this last hour talking about all the things that they're asking you to do, then maybe like this wouldn't be happening and like stuff would just get going on, like, but this is ridiculous. Like, an hour and a half, you arguing about the rules because some people got their feelings hurt? Come on. Uh, and with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank, thank you, Tyler. Next? Public comments?
Uh, Christopher Stratton?
Chris, go ahead. Christopher?
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. I went through the meeting and listened to your, your workarounds on that. I am happy to see that you realize that public comment is something that is needed. I know it might not be what you want to hear, but it is the community, and that's the way that laws and everything get passed and things change. Or we're able to tell you that we don't like the way that you are going. I commend that you guys are at least trying to work something out that will be equitable to everyone, and I hope to see that continuing, and I hope to see less closed-doorness and more transparency from the city council, the city in general, and everyone else. Thank you very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
All right, thank you, Christopher.
Maximus, sorry?
Maximus, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A comment was made by a council member with respect to this perception that the council is not listening and that they're indeed listening. So if the perception is there, you have to question why there's a perception, right? And as the adage goes, perception is reality. I'm not gonna comment on some specific questions that members of the public have asked you to answer, but since you asked to be more specific, I'm just gonna bring up a couple of questions that you were faced with just the past two weeks with respect to some decisions that you've made. Number one was the snow ordinance. A valid question was asked, if you're tweaking this after two years in order to capture a revenue of thirty-five hundred dollars, would it be prudent to send that back to the city staff for further investigation so we don't come back and do it again? And then also, the question was asked, if the city staff is holding the public accountable for seven AM removal, are they doing the same thing with their own staff? That question was never asked, and we are on the third reading. Number two, you were presented with an extra four thousand dollar bill for an eight thousand dollar contract when the company was clearly using the unforeseen event Acts of God clause that was brought up to you. You have a fiduciary duty to the public. If you were presented with an extra four thousand dollar charge from your contractor that you hired to do work at your house, would you ask, what am I paying for? That simple question was never asked. Why are we paying four thousand dollars? And it was passed. Number three, you took about ten minutes to pass a three million dollar contract. The substance of that contract was very valid, but just before that, you just had a precedent on letting a company to charge you an extra thirty-three percent for unforeseen events. Sections of the contracts were read to you, were protected the contractor, but there was no provision to protect the members of the public which own the government and pay for it. That simple question was never asked. Tonight, on the Casper aquifer issue, another valid point, another valid effort, question was asked. There are members of the city of Laramie residents that have paid for that study for all the protections of the Casper aquifer, however, they're getting treated water that smells like chlorine. Who picks those winners and losers? That question was never asked, never answered. And lastly, I'm running out of time, but lastly is a procedural question. We heard at the beginning of the comment that the mayor decided to close the council tonight, and then yet later on, we found out it was actually the decision of the city manager and the attorney. And that is a discrepancy, right? I look forward to your answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Maximus.
Mayor, I don't know if you wanna ask if there are any additional, but I don't see any other.
Are there any additional individuals that would like to make public comment? I don't think we see any, so we'll close this public comment period. And I think that ends, ends our meeting, so this, this work session is finished. Good night, everyone.